All the meeting to order. I want to welcome all the commissioners and the public that are here in person and also on the phone. And we're going to, we may have some hiccups today, so we're going to try to go slow. And a couple of housekeeping items. So this is our first meeting in person back, and we kind of chose a hybrid model. And so what we're doing is allowing folks to either come in person, testify, and/or call in. So I appreciate everybody's patience. It takes quite a bit of technology and staff time to figure that out and do it to where it works. And so I want to say thank you for everyone doing that. Also, in person, your microphones. If I can direct the commissioners to the microphone. So there is a button on the bottom to the right, and it's a little person with a speaking. That is, you have to push that to speak. And in order, so make sure that when you're about ready to speak, you push the button. And then when you're finished speaking, please turn it off to reduce feedback so we can hear each other. So I appreciate everybody doing that. And can the audience hear us out there? Just give us a thumbs up. All right, okay. Also, it is required to wear masks in the building unless you have a medical condition. So I want to say thank you. And I know that sometimes that's, we appreciate for the safety of the public and the commissioners and the team. Thank you for doing that. We really appreciate that. And so, without further ado, we are making an in-person meeting announcement. The Governor's Executive Order Number 16 has expired, and this is the first in-person meeting of the Planning Commission meeting for 2021. In order to comply with the CDC guidelines and the Metro's indoor capacity restrictions, we are limiting the number of people inside the conference room this afternoon, as you can tell. And as you know, we're socially distancing the chairs. And so we also have several options, as I stated, for the public to address the Planning Commission during the hearing. And that's either in person here, and you'll come up and speak at the microphone, or by calling in and making comments on that telephone. That telephone number is (629) 255-1901. Let me say that again. (629) 255-1901. And you'll call in during the case that you're being heard on. If you would like to address the Commission during the public hearing, you'll come up to the podium up here in front. The microphone on the podium has been sanitized. We asked that each speaker sanitize the microphone and where you touched the podium, just to be safe. So we appreciate, I know that's going to take a little bit of doing, and then you can just, there's a trash can right there. I see it. Perfect. And then you'll just put your trash once you wipe down the microphone. We appreciate everybody doing that. So now we will move on to the adoption of the agenda, Item B. And so commissioners, the agenda's in front of you. It's been on the website, and so we will need a motion to adopt the agenda. Is there a motion? The vice chair makes the motion, but if you could press the...
So moved.
Thank you, vice chair. Commissioner Tibbs?
Second.
Commissioner Tibbs, second. It's it. And any discussion? And so we'll go slow.
Sorry. Can the chair ask everyone to speak closer to the microphone? Because we're wearing masks, we want to make sure they can hear us.
Speak very close to the microphone. Thank you. And so we have a proper motion, second, any discussion. If you'll, seeing no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it, and the agenda is adopted. Now we're on to Item C, which is the approval of the April 22, 2021 minutes. Those were sent out to you earlier and posted on the website as well. We'll need a motion to adopt the minutes. Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Thank you, Commissioner Tibbs. That's a proper motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And the chairman seconds it. And so we have a motion and second, any discussion. Seeing no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No. And ayes have it, and the minutes are adopted. It's kind of weird not doing roll call vote, I will have to say. So much faster. So much faster. All right. So now we're on to Item D, which is the recognition of the council members. And I did, I started a list, and so we'll go with the first in-person council member. Council Lady Gamble, do you want to go first? Or do you want to...
I'm waiting until the item comes up.
Okay. Council Lady Gamble's going to wait until the item comes up. Thank you for coming. Appreciate you coming down. I think that we have on the WebEx, so this is going to be interesting, but we have Council Lady Van Reese on the line. And does she want to speak now, Lisa, or...
Yes.
Hello. Council Lady Van Reese, we hear you. And thank you for joining us today, and please go ahead.
Thank you very much, and I'm looking forward to seeing you on the 27th. I wanted to kind of chime in on a few things that have been deferred so that you know in advance. Item number two, the Creative Way Villages, kind of part three, the Ben Allen Apartments, which is item number four. And both of those have been deferred to the 27th, mainly out of administrative, kind of getting some more boxes checked. But the community meetings on both of those projects went extremely well. I wanted to let you know that the community is ready to go forward as soon as we can. And so you'll hopefully see those things on the consent agenda on the 27th. We will be, you'll be seeing for approval on the consent agenda, Items 13A and B, which is the 607 at due West property owned by Good Pastures School. The community meeting on that went probably as well as one can ever go, and everyone's very excited to see that go forward. And so I wanted to make sure you knew that, even though it was on consent. The fourth item in District Eight, item number 24, on 404 Old Hickory Boulevard, was going to be on consent today, but even after the community meeting, there is a close neighbor that has some additional concerns. I believe Sarah was able to even take some time off of work and juggle her schedule to be there today. I wanted to acknowledge how much effort it does take for the public to attend public meetings, and I wanted to acknowledge her effort in going down there and saying that she still had some concerns. And so we'll be working on those things in time for the 27th. But those things are items that we can be working on directly with the developer in regard to making sure that the units being built are appropriately sized and talking about, of course, any traffic problems and how stormwater is going to work and things in regard to making sure that each rezoning, regardless of similar discussions that take place, has an opportunity for everyone to completely understand how it's going to affect the neighborhood. So I'm more than happy to make sure that we continue to work with her and others in that neighborhood to get it right by the 27th. So I just wanted to chime in on those things. I actually miss you guys, and so clearly we have lots going on in District Eight, and I look forward to seeing you all at the end of the month. And so with that, I'll yield my time. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Council Lady. We appreciate you joining us. Thank you very much. Next, I had on the list, Council Lady Virture. Are you on the line?
Yes. Thank you so much, Chair and commissioners. I'm speaking on, let me first say, Councilwoman Tanaka Virture at 901 Split Oak Drive, Antioch, Tennessee, District 28. I'm speaking on an item that's on consent, which is 2021 Zebra, 044 Paul Romeo, 001. I'm asking that this be removed off of consent and defer to July meeting with a public hearing.
Councilwoman Virture, hello, welcome. This is Lucy Kempf. So I'm just directing the commissioners that this is item number 27 on your agenda. And Councilwoman, we heard your request to defer to the July 22, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. I wanted to confirm that. I did want to ask, the applicant team is here, and they have asked that we request to you directly, would you be open to considering a two-meeting deferral at the Planning Commission so they have an opportunity to work with you?
No, because there's a new develop, there's something that's come up today, so I need that time.
Okay. So the commissioners have...
Yeah, well, thank you, Council Lady. We will, is there objection to deferring this to the July, which meeting? In July? What's the date?
July, the July 22 meeting.
We only have one meeting in July 22. And so is there objection to the deferral based on the request of the council member? And I understand the developers thought that this was going to be deferred till June, but the Council Lady is requesting it. Is there, how about we, we usually take a vote on these types of things, just to be clear. I think our attorney would appreciate that much better. So we'll need a motion to defer based on the Council Lady's recommendation to Item 27, to the July 22 meeting. Council Lady Murphy?
I'll make that motion to defer it to the July 22 meeting.
Is there a second? We need a second.
Second.
The vice chair seconds the motion. Any discussion?
I guess I'm just, do we have to do...
Oh, yeah. Vice Chair, you got to speak into the mic. I'm sorry.
Do we have, I'm just wondering, since it's on the public agenda for the deferral of July 22, does that matter?
When the Commission votes July to defer to the 22, then we will, in the next agenda, note that it is being deferred, and so it's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, so we're going out of order, obviously, and we do this based on council member recommendations before we get to the consent or withdrawal sections of the agenda. So we have a proper motion and second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No. Ayes have it. And Council Lady, that Item 27 is deferred to the July 22 meeting. Thank you.
You chair, that is what, public hearing, correct?
Yes, yeah. Public hearing.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, commissioners.
Yes, it will be, it will be on the agenda then. Thank you. Anything else, Council Lady Virture?
That was it. I believe that's the only item I had for today's agenda.
Okay. Thank you for joining us. We appreciate it. Lisa, I didn't see any other council members in the audience. Are there any other on the WebEx app?
Hi, Chairman. There are no in-person or on WebEx.
Thank you. All right. So now that we are on Item E, which is the items for deferral/withdrawal. And Lisa, that's you.
We have the following items for deferral or withdrawal. On page three of your agenda, Item 1A, 2007 SP 037002, Bell Road Blue Hole Road SP amendment. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 24 Planning Commission meeting. The associated case, Item 1B, 95P 025007, Millwood Commons PUD cancellation. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 24 meeting. On page four of your agenda, Item Number 2, 2017 SP 075003, Creative Way Villages Phase Three. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 27 Planning Commission meeting. Item Number 3, 2021 SP 018001, Third and Monroe SP. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 27 Planning Commission meeting. Item Number 4, 2021 SP 02001, Ben Allen Ridge. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 27 Planning Commission meeting. Item Number 5, 2021 SP 029001, Hilltop Estates. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 27 Planning Commission meeting. Item Number 6, 2021 SP 03001, Tulip Grove and Central Pike. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 27, 2021 meeting. On page five of your agenda, Item Number 7, 2021 S 014001, Carlton Estates. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item Number 8, 2021 S 045001, Resubdivision of Lots 5 and 6 Airport Logistics. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 27 Planning Commission meeting, and I would like to note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from that item. Item Number 9, 2021 S 06001, Scruggs Estates. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 10, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Item Number 10, 2021 S 072001, Massman Heights Subdivision. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 27 Planning Commission meeting. Item Number 11, 2021 Z 028PR 001, a rezoning on Ned Shelton Road. Staff recommendation is to defer to May 27. On page six of your agenda, Item Number 12, 2021 Z 035PR 001, a rezoning on Morrow Road. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 27 Planning Commission meeting. On page eight of your agenda, Item Number 24, 2021 Z 039PR 001, a rezoning request on Old Hickory Boulevard. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 27 Planning Commission meeting. On page nine of your agenda, Item Number 27, 2021 Z 044PR 001, a rezoning on Murfreesboro Pike. Staff recommendation is to defer to the July 22, 2021 Planning Commission meeting.
Lisa, did we get 17, 18, 22? Did I, I want to make sure we...
My page is stuck together.
Hey. That's okay.
Sorry about that.
Thank you, Lisa.
We're getting back in the groove, right? Apologies. On page seven of your agenda, Item Number 16, 2021 SP 031001, One Mile Parkway. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 27, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Item Number 17, 2021 SP 033001, 4020 Estes Road SP. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 27, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Item Number 18, 2021 SP 035001, 943, 945, and 947 Woodland SP. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 27, 2021 Planning Commission meeting.
And then what about, I have 32 on my list, too. Is that, that was a new...
That was a new one. Yes.
See, we help each other.
We do. Item Number 32, 2021 Z 031PR 001. It's a rezoning on Bluff Road. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 27 Planning Commission meeting.
Excellent. So let's go through these slow.
Let's do it.
We'll go through these slow. Lisa, make sure that we have, and the commissioners, y'all make sure I get these correct. So we've got items, these are items for deferral/withdrawal. Items 1A, 1B, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 16, 17, 18, 22, 24, 27, and 32. And 27 is to the July 22 date. Is that correct, all of those? Let's make sure. I don't want to miss anything.
Yes, I realize I didn't read the case number for our...
Your microphone's off.
I realize I didn't read the case number for 22, so let me read that into the record. 2021 Z 037PR 001, a rezoning request on Larkin Springs Road, and staff recommendation is to defer to May 27.
Thank you.
Chairman, can I just confirm, Lisa, you said Item 24?
Yes.
Okay.
That one was one that was pulled tonight in person at the meeting and will be deferred automatically.
All right. So let's go over this one more time, just so we're all on the same page, commissioners. Items 1A, 1B, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 16, 17, 18, 22, 24, 27, and 32.
Yes.
Excellent. So commissioners, you've heard the items for deferral. We need a motion for deferral. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Council Lady?
I make the motion to approve.
Excellent. Council Lady makes the motion to approve. Is there a second? Commissioner Johnson?
Second.
Thank you. It's a proper motion and proper second. Any discussion on the deferral items? I'll make sure we get everybody's questions answered. Okay. I don't see, seeing no discussion, we're voting on items for deferral. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No. Ayes have it, and those items are deferred. Lisa, we're back on to the Item F, which is the consent agenda items.
I'm going to do better this time. We won't go back and forth. As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the Commission debate these items, unless a member of the audience or the Commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. The following items are on the consent agenda. Item 13A on page six of your agenda, 17864P 001, Dew West Medical Office Building. It's a request to cancel a planned unit development for properties located on Dew West Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. The associated case 13B, 2021 Z 040PR 001. It's a request to rezone from OG to MUGA for property located on Dew West Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item Number 14, 2018 SP 04001, 3156 Anderson Road SP. It's a request to rezone from AR 2A to SP for property located on Anderson Road to permit 22 multifamily residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. And I would like to note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from that item. Item Number 15, 2021 SP 022001, 1505 Dickerson Pike SP. It's a request to rezone from CS and CL to SP for properties located on Dickerson Pike and Luton Street to permit a mixed-use development. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item Number 19 on page seven of your agenda, 2021 S 015001, Rivergate Station, Section 1, second resub of Lot 2. It's a request for final plat approval to create three lots on property located at 1699 Gallatin Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, and I would like to note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from that item. Item Number 20, 2021 S 091001, West Mead Swim Club, Lot 4. It's a request for final plat approval to create four lots on property located on Davidson Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item Number 21 on page eight of your agenda, 2021 HL 002001, 606 and 707 8th Avenue South Historic Landmark Overlay. It's a request to apply Historic Landmark District to properties located at 606 and 708th Avenue South. Zone DTC. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item Number 23, 2021 Z 038PR 001. It's a request to rezone from RS 5 to R 6 for properties located along Fannie Williams Street. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item Number 25, 2021 Z 042PR 001. It's a request to rezone from IWD to MULANS for properties located on Hagan Street. Staff recommendation is to approve. On page nine of your agenda, Item Number 26, 2021 Z 043PR 001. It's a request to rezone from IWD to MULANS for properties located on Interstate Boulevard South and Heron Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item Number 28, 2021 Z 045PR 001. It's a request to rezone from IWD to MULANS for property located on Merritt Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve, and I would like to note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from that item. Item Number 29, 2021 Z 046PR 001. It's a request, I'm sorry, I think I got an email on that one to defer it.
Can I confirm?
No problem, Lisa. We, well, you looked it up. Did we, did we say Item 25, too? Did I miss that one? I was caught off guard. Bob, did we do Item 25?
Which item was that, 25 you're asking about?
25.
Yeah, that was one that was on the consent.
Perfect. Thank you.
We did get opposition on 29 today, so we'll need to go back and defer that one. So I'll just continue with the consent, and then we'll handle that one. I apologize. It came in as we were starting the meeting.
Which item was that, Lisa?
29.
29? Okay.
Okay. Apologies. So 29 is not on consent. Item 30 on consent, 174P 013, Hickory Hollow PUD cancellation. It's a request to cancel a portion of a planned unit development for properties located at Hickory Hollow. I would like to note that the agenda was published with an incorrect acreage. It has been updated. The acreage of the cancellation is 39.57 acres. Staff recommendation is to approve. And that's it. Oh, and under other business, item number 34, a bonus height certification for 645 Division Street, and item number 38 to accept the director's report.
All right, commissioners. So we'll take care of the consent agenda item, and then we'll go back to 29 and vote on that one to be deferred. So here are the items, and Lisa and commissioners, make sure we get these right, because we're a little rusty getting back, but we're, it's going pretty good, I thought. All right. So items for the consent agenda to be passed tonight are the following. Items 13A, 13B, 14, 15, 19, 20, 21, 23, 24, 25, 26, 28, 30, 34, and 38. Is that correct?
24 is not on consent. That one was deferred.
Item, oh, it sure was. All right. So Item 24 is not on there, so let's read the list again. My fault. Items 13A, 13B, 14, 15, 19, 20, 21, 23, 25, 26, 28, 30, 34, and 38. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. So those commissioners, those items are for the consent agenda. We need a motion to vote on the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion on consent.
Thank you, Council Lady. Motion.
Second.
And Commissioner Johnson seconds it. Any discussion? And seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No. Ayes have it. And so we have one item that was on the consent agenda that was published that we need to take off and defer to win. Lisa?
Item Number 29, 2021 Z 046PR 001. It's a request to rezone from RS 7.5 to RM 28NS for properties located on Timmins Street. It should be deferred to the May 27 Planning Commission meeting.
Okay. So the motion will be deferring Item 29 to the May Commission meeting. Is there a motion?
Yes, I make motion to make Item 29 defer to May 27 meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner. It's a proper motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Council Lady. And second, any other discussion on Item 29? All in favor of deferring Item 29 say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No. Ayes have it, and it is deferred. So now, that brings us to our public agenda items, and so our public hearing items. items, and so our public hearing items. And so just to go through some of this with everyone, because it's going to be a little bit different this time since we're doing the hybrid model. And I do want to say thank you to LIS and the team, but we just felt like this was the safest way to kind of start our Commission meetings back. So I want to say thank you. I think that the Commissioners, myself, and the team felt like this was the most comfortable thing to do and the safest way. So thank you, Director. We appreciate you doing that.
Thank you. And Chair, before we get to the public hearing items, I wonder if you would entertain a comment from a council member who was in on the line?
Oh, that's correct. Yes. So, so there is a Council lady that joined us while we were doing our business, so I apologize. Let's, Council Lady Porterfield. Council Lady Porterfield, are you on the line with us?
I am on the line. Can you all hear me okay?
We can. We can hear you, so please go ahead. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you so very much. I believe, and I apologize, I'm having a little bit of a hard time hearing you, but I believe item number eight, numbers eight and 11 were deferred. And item number 14, I think it just passed on the consent agenda. I did want to make sure that if any of our District 29 constituents were listening in, that made sure that they knew that we did have a community meeting to discuss this. And I've received a lot of support. I only had one person to call in with some questions about opposition, but overall, we've received a lot of community support. We will be having another community meeting to address any additional concerns about it. So if there were any District 29 constituents listening in, I just wanted to reassure them that they would have additional opportunities to speak with me about this project. So thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Council lady. We, we appreciate you joining us, and, and thank you for your patience. Thank you. All right. So now we are on the items to be considered under public hearing. For the listeners at home, we have provided multiple ways for you to participate in this meeting, either in person or via phone call. Normally, we take the applicant first, as, as you all remember last year, and then supporters, then applicant first, then supporters, then opponents. Because of the different ways that folks can call in, we're not going into those categories. So you just, it's first come, first served. We're going to take people that are in the audience first, and then we're going to take the callers. So to, to help us, please, when you, when you come up to the microphone or when you're on the WebEx app, please state your name and address and whether you support or oppose that particular item. As usual, we also took in emailed comments through Tuesday at 3:00 PM. Those comments have been uploaded and are available on the SharePoint site, and this is kind of a newer change for us, so make sure that y'all, I wanted to point that out. We do, as I stated earlier in the meeting, we have a call-in number for those of the public that wish to call in. That number is 6292551901. Please wait until the public hearing for your item. We have two public hearing items tonight, which my understanding and looking through the list are items number 31 and 33. And so please wait until calling in on, when, when you want to speak on those particular items. If you're calling in, also be aware that there is a legally required 30-second delay, which means that if you're watching your screen at home and trying to talk at the same time, you're going to be 30-second delayed. So if you would, to, to make sure you mute your television or turn it all the way down and focus on what we're saying at the Commission, what you hear, and that will really help. So, like I said, items 31 and 33. So now we, I think, are ready to begin the first item. And so item 31, which is Amelia. Is Amelia?
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Hey, Amelia. We can hear you, so please go ahead.
Okay, great. This is Amelia Lewis with the Planning Department, presenting item 31 tonight, which is a request for an SP located at 121 Madison Street. As I said, the request is to rezone from IR and IG, which are two industrial districts, to specific planned zoning to permit self-storage use. Next slide, please. Thank you. Staff's recommendation is to disapprove. Next slide, please. So the height, oh, sorry. The site is shaded there in the gray color. It's located at the southwest intersection of Madison Street and First Avenue North. The site is approximately 1.4 acres, and it is currently split zoned. So the eastern portion of the site is zoned industrial general, and the western portion of the site is zoned industrial restrictive. The site has frontage along First Avenue North, Madison Street, which is the northern street of the site, and Second Avenue North, which is along the western property line. The surrounding properties have been developed with a mix of uses. So this includes industrial uses, industrial zoning, as well as some mixed-use development zoned SP to the north and west of the site. Next slide, please. So on the screen is the proposed site plan associated with the rezoning request. The western portion of the site, you'll see in kind of a lighter gray color, has been developed with a four-story, 92,000-square-foot self-storage structure. On the other side of the site, on the eastern side, there's a proposed self-storage building, which is outlined in a darker gray-black color. And so that portion of the site would be permitted to have a two-story, 30,000-square-foot self-storage building on this portion of the site. This portion of the site is currently being used as surface parking. The proposed structure would have frontage along Madison Avenue, First Avenue North. Along First Avenue North is an existing green-white basement, and there's a five-foot sidewalk along the Madison Street frontage. An existing vehicular curb cut is located on Madison Street between the two buildings, and that would remain with this request. Next slide, please. So here's another idea, or another look at the site, so you can kind of get an idea of what's built there today. The site is outlined in blue, and we see that larger four-story self-storage building that's already been constructed, and the adjacent parking area on that same lot would also be developed with a two-story self-storage structure. Next slide, please. And so one of the things I'm going to talk about tonight is the existing conditions on the site in terms of what has been developed and what would be developed. So we're going to be talking about floor-to-area, or SAR calculations. And so for those of you who might not be yet familiar with SAR, SAR is the amount of square footage of building that is permitted on a site, and this is established in the zoning districts. So the existing self-storage use and the proposed self-storage use are both permitted uses under the existing zoning on the site. So when the structure that's there today came in, they went through the permitting process. The site is approximately 1.42 acres, and the SAR of the existing zoning district on the site is 0.6. Under this, right, under this SAR, it would have permitted a maximum building of approximately 37,000 square feet. And you can see that mass up on the slide. Due to a permitting error, the structure on the site, the existing structure on the site today is almost 93,000 square feet, which results in a SAR of 1.5, where the permitted area would have been 0.6. So the new proposed structure would permit an additional 30,000, 29,568, so 30,000 square feet of self-storage use in a new building next to the existing building on the site. So with the two buildings together, that would be a combined square footage of 122,000 square feet, or a resulting SAR of 1.97, which would exceed what is permitted by the zoning district. Next slide, please. The policy on the site is T4 urban mixed-use neighborhood. And so in these policy areas, we really want to see a mix of uses developed at the urban level. Common features of these areas are a moderate to high-density, mixed-use residential building, commercial building, some light industrial, and institutional as well. But these buildings are really characterized by connectivity, complete streets, and having an urban environment that would result as, as a result of this policy. Next slide, please. The general intent behind a specific plan is to provide development flexibility to projects that address, if not exceed, the goals of the policy. And this would be, in certain instances, we do allow SPs to create their own FAR calculations. In this case, the proposed intent of the SP would be to provide additional square footage to uses permitted by right, as well as creating a new building when the existing building already FAR exceeds what the zoning permits currently. So a combination of that with the project not meeting the goals of the policy by not providing any mixed use or walkability and enhancing the goals of the policy, staff recommends disapproval. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that. And obviously, we may have questions, so, but now we are ready to open this item for public hearing. And is the applicant either in the room? Okay. Come on up. And as you know, you'll have 10 minutes. You can save two of the 10 minutes from, for a rebuttal at the end. And please state your name and address. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
Whoops, hold on. Let's try to get the, is the microphone on, Lisa? It might be that...
Hello?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you're going to have to talk close. There we go. Thank you.
All right. Let me tell you, my name is Ken Renner. I live at 905 King Fisher Point in Nashville, and I'm here representing the applicant Premier Storage. And I am very honored to be the first person to address the Commission in person since the pandemic. Welcome back. I had a packet of materials that was supposed to be in your packet today, that was supposed to have been migrated forward from when we were deferred in April. I'm told that that didn't happen for some reason, but I had, the staff was kind enough to make some copies of one of the materials, which is a letter from me where I discussed the proposal. There was also a very strong endorsement letter in the packet from Historic Germantown, and a copy of a mural that we have proposed in, on the back of the building that is very evocative of historic sites in Germantown along the river.
Hey, Lucy. I'm, I'm so sorry. I'm hearing from the folks that are running the WebEx meeting that they're not hearing you well, so that you're going to have to, like, get pretty close to the microphone, and we might be able to extend it, but they just cannot hear it. Thank you.
Yeah, if you could just talk right in. There you go.
All right. So when we first met with Councilman O'Connell on this proposal, he asked us to work with Historic Germantown for several reasons. First, he wanted us to tie this facility into Germantown in some way. He wanted us to tie it into the river, and he wanted us to tie it into the Greenway, so it, it was a unifying thing for the community. Working with the community and working with Historic Germantown and their Development Committee, we totally redesigned our original proposal. We had had a four-story structure containing 50,000 square feet, and to be honest, it was kind of dull architecturally. But working with the Development Committee, we shrank it to two stories. We shrank it down to about 30,000 square feet and added some additional architectural features that we were told made it very attractive to Historic Germantown. They liked the fact that it was going to replace a parking lot that is currently on the site where the new building would go. That's a parking lot that we lease, and is currently fully leased to boats, RVs, trailers, that kind of use. Some of the community considered it a nice, or, and they were glad to be rid of it. Even more, they liked the mural that we had proposed for the back of the building. The entire rear of the building, two stories, was going to be covered by this mural, which covered a lot of historic sites in Germantown, had pictures of historic sites along the river, and really was, was very nice. It was designed by the Eastside Mural Company over in East Nashville, and once the building is completed, they are commissioned to paint the mural there where it belongs. And you would admire it had it, made it to your packet. The letter from Historic Germantown discussed the inadvisability of a retail component at this location. And if you visit the site, you will see that going back along First Avenue, which really isn't there, it's a truck, a truck entrance.
Yes, sir. So we're having some technical difficulties, so we're going to try to, I completely apologize. So we're going to take a, just a quick pause. We're going to give you your time back, and then we're going to get a microphone. We're told that we can't hear you on the television, so...
I'm right on top of it.
Yeah, I know. So we're going to try another microphone. So just give us a second, and we'll set this up. We're, we completely apologize.
This is Lucy. Can the, Sean, can you hear me?
Hi, Lucy. This is Sean in the call center. I can hear you, but only when you're, if you hold your mouth directly at that microphone. If your head turns at all, we lose it.
Will I get in trouble for removing this bandage thing? Okay, let me, okay, try that one.
Sean, this is Bob. Can you, can you hear me on this microphone?
Yes, Bob, we can hear that.
Why don't we let people perch here and talk into this microphone? You guys might not be able to look on.
Any particular place that's better than another?
You guys... How hard is it to move this, or do we care? Wait, John, hold on.
Okay. So come on up. Here, let's move the seat. Can we, or, yeah, we better not mess with the...
I'm afraid to...
Yeah, try the other one and see. That way they...
Peop, can y'all hear me? I mean, in the, in the, in the space upstairs, can you hear me?
Lucy, this is Sean in the call center. We can hear you.
Wonderful. Okay.
Okay.
Chair, is this...
Yes, that's perfect. All right. So we're going to give your 10 minutes back to you, and let's start over fresh. See, the second guy always does a better job speaking, so we...
Well, I'm the first and second person to address the Commission. That is quite an honor.
Yeah. All right. Go ahead. Sorry about that. Thank you for your patience.
Again, my name is Ken Renner. I live at 905 King Fisher Point here in Nashville, and I am here on behalf of my client, Premier Investors, I'm sorry, Premier Storage Investors, and they are the applicant in this case. When we first met with Councilman O'Connell on this proposal, he asked us to do three things. He asked us to tie the expanded storage facility into the Germantown... He asked us to tie the expanded storage facility into the Germantown community in some way, to tie it into the river, which you can see is a little bit behind us there, and to tie it into the greenway. And working with the committee over the course of a number of different meetings, we totally redesigned our original proposal for this facility. From four stories, it came down to two. From 50,000 square feet, it came down to about 30,000 square feet. And we also added some other architectural features that they very much liked. They liked the fact that it was going to replace what is currently on the site, which is a parking lot that is leased to people who park storage units, RVs, boats, trailers, that sort of thing. Some of the community consider it to be an eyesore, and we're glad to be rid of it. They liked even more the fact that we had proposed that on the entire rear facing of the building, two stories tall and along the entire building, we were going to paint a mural that was very evocative of historic sites in the area. We had... It was designed by the Eastside Mural Company in East Nashville. And they were committed to painting it once the building was completed. It had historic bridges and the river scenes and a lot of other things that everyone seemed to like. If you'll visit the site, though, on First Avenue, just behind our facility, there really isn't First Avenue. There is an entrance to a operating cement plant. It is kind of industrial, to say the least. The cement plant comes every day with noise, heavy truck traffic, and dust. Lots of dust. Things get covered up in dust pretty quickly. Altogether, as a licensed commercial real estate broker, it is not the kind of place that I would recommend a client put a retail store or that any retail client I've worked with would put a retail store. It's just not going to happen. The letter from Commercial... From Historic Germantown that I wish you had in front of you discusses the advisability of not putting retail into the facility. If I can quote from them, they say, "We do not believe there would be sufficient vehicle or pedestrian traffic to attract, let alone support, any retail stores in that fairly remote area of Germantown." "There are many mixed-use buildings in the area with retail space that has never been leased." And in fact, just to get a better handle on where that is, I took a crew and we did a walking tour within about a three, four-block radius of where our facility is located. And we found that there was a 28% vacancy rate in the retail in that area, down in that lower part of Germantown. That compares to a vacancy rate of less than 4% for the Nashville community as a whole. There is another storage facility that was asked to incorporate retail into its design just two blocks away from us. More than a year after they built those spaces and went operational with their storage facility, five of those six retail spaces are still vacant. They can't find anyone to lease them. It's just too industrial down there. It's not a place for mixed use. We appreciate very much the leadership of Councilman O'Connell in bringing us to this place, getting us with Historic Germantown, and getting us to find a way that we can work with them and make a facility that is going to be complementary with the community. I think everyone came to the table with a cooperative and constructive attitude. And the result is a win, we believe, for all concerned. We appreciate your consideration and hope that we have earned your support by the work that we've done. I have our engineer with me, Will Kronk, who is here to address any technical questions that you might have. Or I'll take any other questions.
Thank you, sir. We'll save two minutes for your rebuttal.
Thank you.
And some questions may come up. Thank you. Oh, yeah, we have to make sure we wipe. Yeah, Lucy forgot to do that, but if you could... We're going to get kicked out of here. Thank you. And just the table. Thank you. Sorry. Weird times call for weird measures.
I get paid extra for this part, right?
Yeah, we'll double your pay. We appreciate that. All right. So now we are ready for the in-person comment on this item. So if you would like to speak, you can please come to the podium. And if... When you line up, make sure you socially distance yourself. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this particular item in the audience? All right. Seeing none, we're now ready to take calls from the members of the public who wish to call in. Your screen should show that call-in number now. So you don't need to wait to call in unless you're on the other item. Please wait, because we put you in a queue system. Is there anyone on the WebEx call, Shaun, on this item?
Chair, this is Shaun in the call center. We don't currently have any callers in the queue. We'll take a brief pause since we've just opened the lines, and I'll check back in.
Thank you. And just a reminder for folks that do call in, you have two minutes to speak. Also, members of the public have two minutes to speak. And when you're on the WebEx call, we can't show a timer, so Shaun will let you know when you have 30 seconds left of your two minutes and then tell you when the time is up. And I know that's kind of rude and interruptive. Not rude, but interruptive, but that's the only way we can figure out how to do it. So we appreciate everybody doing that. So we'll wait for a minute.
Chair, this is the call center. We have no callers in the queue for this item.
Thank you. And Lisa, did we get any emails on this item? I know I always ask that.
We did not.
All right. And is the council member on the line? I know that the council member's not here. Let's see. Freddie O'Connell, Councilmember O'Connell? Are they on the line, Lisa? Is Freddie on the line? I don't... No. Okay, well, seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. And how about discussion? Jeff, you want to go first?
Sure, Greg.
I mean, Commissioner.
Happy to do so. I empathize with the applicant. I don't think retail today works. However, this is a continuing, dynamic, changing area. If you think about what's happening across the river, what's happening on the river in Germantown, I think staff has analyzed this correctly for the future needs of the site. I do think it happens to be excessive on the FAR, and so I'm going to support staff's recommendation.
Commissioner Lawson?
I have to agree with what the commissioner is saying. I want to hear a few more arguments.
Commissioner Sims?
I want to thank Mr. Renner for all the homework he did, the walking tours, all of that. I was dismayed that, given how much support that your reporting there is, that we don't have a single letter or anything. So I don't know how to judge that. I did do a walking tour myself of the area last week. And I actually don't know about the future needs right now. But this area is going to be mixed use at some point. And it's zoned correctly, so I have no reason, either in terms of people supporting it that we have evidence of or the fact that this area will not one day be a mixed-use area. So I believe the staff judges correctly.
Counselor Lenny?
Thank you. I think the fact that this site, I guess it says a permitting error, already has what appears to be more than double what should be on here for the FAR is a little bit atrocious to be coming back and asking for an SP and wanting more. I think Councilman O'Connell is also very... He will let us know if he supports something. And his absence here tonight and lack of a letter speaks volumes to me. And I do find it funny that Historic Germantown would not be communicating with us as well. They usually are pretty outspoken. And so without any of that and the fact that it's already double what it should be here, and it is, this is where we need to continue our mixed-use districts. I'm sure that concrete plant won't be there forever. I think this is way too premature to put something here that would last... We know self-storage never goes away. So I'm not ready to approve this here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, previous commissioners made comment. I am in agreement. You know, lack of email or call in support of this project, I cannot find any overwhelming compelling reason for us as a commissioner to overturn staff's analysis in this location and this specific use. I think staff analysis is right on. And especially, I am concerned about exceeding FAR. It's already exceeding more than two and a half times with allowed FAR. And by approving this, it will exceed over three times. And I think this location will have potential. For that reason, I'm in agreement with staff recommendation.
Commissioner Blackshear?
I agree with all the comments that my prior commissioners have stated. And it is unfortunate that there was an error during permitting for the first building. And I know it's not really our province to talk about permitting, but errors happen, right? But hopefully, whatever happened is a one-off event and that we don't have future errors coming before us, because we don't like to see those. Thanks.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Nothing more specific to add that was already spoken. However, I would wonder if maybe in the future we ought to look at policy where we start looking at these facilities, like we do parking garages, you know, more having a wrap around them. We don't really put a lot of the same restrictions that we do. So I think that could be something that we look for in the future that... I'm not saying it would work here, but just because I have the mic, I thought it'd be a good time to bring it up.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chair?
I don't have anything else to add to my other commissioners, so I will make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second? And Commissioner Tibbs seconds it. Any other discussion?
Chair, I did want to note that we worked closely with codes. And I believe that the error has been corrected in terms of the regulations. They now know where that happened, and I don't believe it'll happen again. And so they were very, very helpful in helping us to resolve the issue once we realized it. So...
Thank you, Director. Any other discussion? So we have a proper motion second. And seeing no other discussion, all in favor of disapproval, staff's recommendation, say aye. Pose no. Ayes have it, and it's disapproved. Next is item 33. And I believe Jason is doing that item. Oh, Lisa's... Lisa's doing the item. Go ahead, Lisa.
Hi, Lisa Milligan with the Planning Department. And I will be presenting item number 33. This is a request for concept plan approval for Heartland North. This is a request for a concept plan approval for 180 single-family lots. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. A bit of history on this site. In November of 2017, the Planning Commission approved a 193-lot concept plan. This was challenged by neighboring... By neighbors of the area. The appeals court remanded it back to the Planning Commission for a hearing. The revised plan is being presented tonight. This is the previously approved concept plan, which was for 193 lots. It was approved in November of 2017. Just to get you familiarized with the location of the property and surrounding zoning, the property is located south of Brick Church Lane, north of Brawley Parkway, west of I-24. The property is currently zoned R-10, one- and two-family residential. Property to the west and the north are also zoned R-10. There is a large area of RS-20 property to the northwest. And to the south, this site is bounded by a property that is currently zoned IWD, industrial warehousing and distribution. Based on the cluster lot provision of the zoning code, the maximum lot yield for this site is 242 lots with 62 family lots for a total of 302 rooftops. 180 single-family lots are proposed. In regards to the Planning Commission review of subdivisions, the Planning Commission has granted authority to review and approve subdivisions through TCA Sections 133401 and 134301. The Planning Commission is given the authority to adopt regulations governing the subdivision of land. It is a technical review. The Planning Commission shall approve or disapprove a plat within 60 days after initial dismissal... After initial consideration by the commission, which would be tonight. So I wanted to talk a little bit about Nashville Next, the general plan that's adopted for Nashville and Davidson County, and the Community Character Manual, or CCM as we refer to it. Excuse me. So each community plan that makes it Nashville Next, there are 14, include detailed character policies for every property in the county. Those link the countywide vision of Nashville Next from Nashville Next to the zoning and subdivision regulations that are applied to those properties. From the Community Character Manual, it indicates that when we're looking at a rezoning, the Planning Commission is looking as to whether or not something is consistent with the land use policies. In subdivision regulations, the community plan policy is used for determining which set of rules apply to a particular property. For example, in neighborhood maintenance, you would be looking at compatibility. In T2 rural areas, you would be looking at the rural subdivisions... Rural subdivision regulations. Prior versions of the subdivision regulations contained a uniform set of standards. They didn't consider the diverse character that exists across Davidson County. The commission has adopted the current subdivision regulations that incorporate the general plan policies by including rules and standards for specific transects. This allows for the subdivision regulations to reflect the unique character found across the county in the different transects. By reviewing against the subdivision regulations, you're reviewing against the general plan. This property is within a T3 suburban neighborhood evolving policy. T3 suburban policies indicate that we should be referring to the conventional suburban subdivision regulations. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the policy history on this property. This, I will zoom in in a moment, but just wanted you to show the broader White's Creek area and the land use policies that were adopted as part of Nashville Next in 2015. This property, pointed here with an arrow, was adopted as T3 suburban neighborhood evolving. There are surrounding areas to the north and west that have rural policy, to the south, district industrial policy. There were 11 areas of White's Creek that had further study after the initial adoption of Nashville Next. You can see those areas outlined on this map in blue. The property in question, with the red star on it, was not one of the 11 areas that had additional study. Additionally, there was an application in 2019 that was brought to this planning commission to ask for a change to the policy. And the Planning Commission disapproved that request to change the policy. So the policy on this property is T3 suburban neighborhood evolving with pockets of conservation primarily located to the northwest corner of the site. Those pockets of conservation are reflective of stream and stream buffer, as well as areas of steep slope. The subdivision process, as you all know, is a three-step process. The first step is concept plan. The second step is final site plan, which includes construction plans and detailed, detailed construction plans that are reviewed by all reviewing agencies. Final plat, and if there is infrastructure, bonding. The proposed plan is a, is a concept plan for 180 single-family cluster lots. The plan includes two access points on Brick Church Lane, one to the west and one to the east. There are two stub streets provided, one to the larger property to the west and one to the centrally located property. It's standard in neighborhood evolving policies that we would be creating opportunities for future connectivity. The zoning code provides the cluster lot option as an option that's permitted by right. It provides flexibility of design, creation of common open space, and preservation of natural features. The lot yield is based on taking out, taking 85% of the gross land area and dividing it as, by the minimum lot size for the base district. In this case, the lot yield would be 242. Some of those also could be duplexes, given that the zoning is one- and two-family. The proposal is for 180 single-family lots. The open space is required to have a minimum of 15% per phase. Phase one has 4.4 acres or 18% of that phase. Phase two has 20 acres or 82% of that phase. They have also proposed recreational facilities consistent with the requirements of the code. With the cluster lot option, lots may be reduced, in size, the equivalent of two zoning districts, which for this case would be to the, to the R6 zoning district, allowing for lots that are 6,000 square feet in size. Well, my green is not showing up so well, but I had all of, you can sort of see in a gray area that the, that's showing the areas of open space. There's a large area of open space that's in the northwest corner of the site. That area is where the most constrained site, most constrained property is because of the slopes, and so those are being set aside in that open space. There's another standard that we look at with a subdivision where you have areas of steep slope, and that's the hillside standards, hillside development standards. That indicates that development of residentially zoned land shall minimize changes in grade, cleared area, and volume of cut and fill in those hillside portions of the property with 20% or greater natural slopes. Single-family subdivision in these areas are encouraged to utilize the cluster lot provisions. In general, the code states that in general, lots shall be clustered on the portions of the site with natural slopes of less than 20%. This map is indicating for you the areas of 20% or greater slopes, 20 to 24 indicated in yellow, and 25 and above in red. I would note that the applicant has indicated that areas on the central portion of the site, here, are not man-made slopes, but are instead left over from T dot, from T dot utilizing this property during the construction of interstates. However, staff did ask that lots be removed from those areas, and they were. Staff finds that this is consistent with the subdivision regulations and the zoning code, and therefore recommends approval with conditions.
Thank you, Lisa. Now, we, we'll go ahead and open this item for public hearing. Is the applicant in room? Come on up. Welcome. You have 10 minutes and can save two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal. Please state your name and address. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? That's good.
Yes, this is, that's great. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Will Coles, live at 4712 Granny White Pike, and I'm the Division President for Pulte Group in Tennessee. Locally, we build homes under three brands, Pulte Homes, Centex Homes, and Del Webb's. As a third-generation Nashvillian, I'm committed to developing and building high-quality homes and communities and neighborhoods to support and grow my local team of over 80 employees who work in partnership with hundreds of local subcontractors and small businesses. By approving this community, you will be allowing us to make substantial infrastructure improvements to the local area, give us the opportunity to build 180 much-needed homes in the Nashville real estate market, and to continue to employ hard-working Nashvillians. We became involved in this project after the initial approval from Planning Commission, but before the ruling on the lawsuit filed by the adjacent property owners that sent the original concept plan back to the Planning Commission. Instead of resubmitting the original 193-lot concept plan, we worked with Councilwoman Gamble to get her feedback. We participated in two public meetings where we listened to local resident feedback, and conducted a one-on-one meeting with our neighbor whose family owns the property in the interior of our site plan. Based on that feedback, we made several changes to the property, including we reduced the number of lots from 193 to 180, despite the fact that we are allowed 242 units under the current R10 zoning classification, which is the second least dense zoning allowed within the T3 subdivision neighborhood evolving policy area. We removed all the lots that fronted on Brick Church Lane to provide a transition to the T2 RM policy area north of Brick Church Lane. We agreed to add a landscaping buffer to provide additional screening to our adjacent property owner. We agreed to an $80,000 contribution to Metro to make further road improvements. By addressing these resident concerns and by working with planning staff, we now have designed a community that goes above and beyond the requirements of a development within the R10 zoning regulation. And some additional highlights include, we minimized the high-slope disturbance by preserving 5.6 acres of greater than 20% slope areas, or 82% of the high-slope areas on the entire site. We are preserving a large 3.71-acre area of continuous slopes greater than 25%. We dug over 58 test pits and worked with a soils engineer to identify the necessary foundation types for all the homes. We have met or exceeded all site distance requirements, including cutting back a large slope to make sure that all of our access points onto Brick Church Lane are as safe as possible for everyone, and we provided some renderings of the entrances and the view off of Brick Church Lane that I think should be in your packet tonight. We conducted a traffic study during typical hours, and we were building southbound turn lanes onto Brick Church Lane and westbound turn lanes onto Brick Church Pike to facilitate movement and reduce wait times in addition to the $80,000 contribution mentioned previously. We are providing off-site water improvements that will improve water pressure between I-24 all the way to Knight Road. We are installing stormwater measures that are approved and that will create post-development flows that are less than the pre-development flows. We agreed to dedicate a viable access and construction easement for the construction of the future long-range Greenway Trail. We will build a fire pit and its hot-lap playground as our required recreational facilities in addition to the walking trail. And we are preserving 12 acres of trees, which is 18% of the entire site. In summary, we have done everything in our power to listen and make changes to all impacted parties and to be a good neighbor and build the best community we possibly can. I appreciate your consideration tonight, and we're going to reserve the rest of our time for rebuttal.
Thank you. One more.
One more.
That is a sanitizer.
Yeah, I'll sanitize. I'll sanitize.
Sorry.
I know you're safe. Hello, I'm Jim Murphy, 1600 Division Street, Suite 700, Nashville, Tennessee, 37203. I'm the attorney for the applicant. I just have some procedural things I want to get into the record. I want to make sure that the zoning ordinance is included in the record, the subdivision regulations, and the minutes of the June 27, 2019 Planning Commission meeting that Lisa referenced, when the Planning Commission denied the neighbor's request to change the T3 NE policy to T2 RM. So we'd just like to put those in the record, and we'll reserve the rest of our time for rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you. And you'll have two minutes.
And I'll clean up, yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate you doing that. And so, we haven't, like we said, we haven't been in person with a large case that, where a lot of folks want to speak. So just to remind everybody in the audience of some of the ground rules. Number one, we ask, and I think it's probably the most important thing, we ask everybody to be very professional, talk to the chair, and we appreciate everybody coming down. Try not to repeat yourself. We want to be respectful of everyone's time, and so we appreciate everybody coming down. And the way we're going to do this, if, like what you see here, we're going to start with everybody in the audience. It's, everybody gets two minutes, first come, first served. And since there's a lot of folks, we're going to, we're not doing opponents first, I mean, pro first and opponents second. So everybody, it's this first come, first served. If you would like to speak, you get two minutes. The timer is right over here, and you can see the timer. So when the timer is over, we, we ask that you clean the microphone and the table, just to be safe. And so, thank you. And then, we're going to go ahead and get started with the public comment now. So, who wants to go first? And then, just to remind the council lady, council lady, what would, you know how this goes, we let the public speak first, and then the applicant will do the rebuttal, and then that's when you can speak. Okay. Mr. Holloman? Welcome.
It's good to be back in person.
Very good to be back.
Members of the commission, my name is Jason Holloman, 4210 Park Avenue. I represent Save White's Creek, which is primarily composed of the litigants of the lawsuit that was referenced earlier, that was a writ of certiorari appeal of the initial decision by the commission to approve the initial concept plan that was submitted in 2017. As the commission, I'm sure, is aware, the trial court and the Court of Appeals affirmed the trial court in finding that this body had significantly greater discretion than what was discussed and advised at that meeting. You're going to hear specifically from some of the neighbors as to the concerns that were, some of which were raised in 2017, and some of which persist today. In large part, the concern relates to the level of density of this development as compared to the surrounding area. And specifically, what the Court of Appeals found was that this body has the ability to look, yes, at the subdivision regulations, the ordinances, but also at the larger general plan. And in the general plan, we find Section 3-1, Paragraph 2, which grants you the authority to look at the adopted general plan and its constituent elements. And specifically, you'll find that in the Community Character Manual and the general plan as adopted, there is reference to this area though being part of the transect for more suburban development, to be respectful of the overall rural character of the area that immediately is adjacent to this area. And when you look at the map and you see the properties that are owned by my clients, this is substantially still a rural area. And the concern is the utilization of, of the, the development of the area in cluster lot format, which frankly, is allowing areas that could not be effectively developed because of the steep slopes and topography, for those areas to be counted towards a greater density so that we're seeing an R6 development where an R10 development would otherwise be permitted, so that you have much smaller lots than anything that surrounds it. And so with that, we just ask that this body exercise the authority that was clarified by the Court of Appeals, look at the broader policies of the general plan, and disapprove this development as, as it is currently proposed in this concept plan.
Thank you, Mr. Holloman. Good to see you. Next, who wants to go next? Come on up. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm wiped down. That's okay?
Oh, yeah, Mr. Holloman didn't wipe down.
Meet you.
We won't start your time yet.
I've seen you all before. I've seen my father or my brother. I've been to a restaurant. Explains my hair. I apologize.
Welcome.
Speaking as a representative, I see I have five minutes. Thank you. My name is George Ewing. I'm the Secretary of Friends of White's Creek Neighborhood Group. I live at 4601 White's Creek Pike. As Mr. Holloman stated, the subregs, that Section 312 is in the subregs, states that subdivisions shall comply with the adopted general plan. Consider, the court ruling went on to say that the consideration of a subdivision request is judicial function. It is the duty and authority of the commission to adjudicate proposals for compliance, and commissioners enjoy a considerable amount of discretion to exercise that authority. The Bordeaux-White's Creek Haynes Trinity Community Plan is the relevant plan. It states that the community plans, this is quote, "states that the community plans explain each community's role in Nashville Next vision and apply community character policies to every property in Davidson County, to implement that vision through land use decisions such as zone changes and subdivision requests." It's on page five. It goes on to state that "all zoning, subdivision, and applicable development applications will be reviewed for consistency with the intent of this policy." It says that three times in our community plan, pages 50, 54, and 56. Noncompliance with the community plan. Bordeaux-White's Creek Plan, its proposal fails that plan by failing to be mindful of the rural context and failing to create transitions to complement the adjacent rural area. On page 24, the quote is, "Generally, Bradley Parkway marks the transition between rural and suburban policies. However, due to pass zoning and development decisions, a few areas of suburban policy are located in the southern portion of White's Creek. These areas should remain mindful of their larger surrounding rural context as development occurs and create transitions through building and site design as needed to complement the adjacent rural area." On page 12, states Nashville Next calls for housing diversity that is tailored to the context, rural, suburban, or urban, and character of the area. Page 23, "Due to the natural and rural character, the community anticipates modest growth, which should be rural in character. It fails to comply with the primary goals or key concepts of the community plan. The key goals: preserving environmentally sensitive features and open space, preserving established residential areas in rural and suburban character, which this area is established rural character, and strategically locating new residential development in suburban and urban areas. This proposal disproportionately impacts the established rural character, fails to preserve sensitive features, and is strategically unsound by attempting to direct urban density to rural area." This policy is noncompliant with the Community Character Manual. Going to the Community Character Manual, that's the transect. The specific one here that applies is T3 NE, also CO. I'm going to deal with T3 NE. Fails by being overly dense. Typical appropriate zoning is in areas of T3 is no more dense than RS 7.5. By the way, in your binders, what I'm talking about is on pages two through five and six. Fully 77% of the cluster lots in this proposal are smaller than what would be allowed in RS 7.5. The equivalent R6 density through the cluster lot option is noncompliant with the goals of the Community Character Manual. In fact, R6 is typical to areas of T4 urban policy. Quote, page 147 to 148, "In the event the new construction is supported, the density or intensity of development for the environmentally constrained portions of a site is lower to an extent that preserves the essential integrity of the natural landform and vegetation. Specific residential densities are determined by physical site characteristics, the presence of existing or planned infrastructure, adjacent policy areas. In the impact that the proposed development would have on the environmental features in question in general, the more environmentally sensitive the site is, the lower the acceptable density or intensity development is. This proposal disproportionately impacts the adjacent established areas of T2 rural character and T2 rural policy, and it fails to preserve sensitive features. This policy fails to provide housing density. T3 NE is intended to provide a mix of housing types in quote, creative, innovative, and environmentally sensitive development teaks, quote, versus groupings of single types of houses. Centex Homes is Pulte's entry-level product known for its repetitive and expansive pattern of harmony. Fails to meet diversity requirement. Fails the required connectivity. T3 NE is intended to improve connectivity intended for areas, quote, "of moderate to high levels of connectivity where street networks, sidewalks, bikeways, mass transit, none of these are proposed. A rural lane is not a street network. Parcel is bound and isolated between freeways, power lines, the FedEx trucking lot, and an established area of rural character with rural policy." Failing to be environmentally sensitive. T3 NE areas are to be, quote, "developed with creative thinking and environmentally sensitive building and site development techniques." Page 143. Quote, "Achieving and maintaining healthy watersheds requires that new development in T3 NE areas be sensitively designed to contribute to their continued health." Page 154, "Amount of time. The proposal deploys clear-cutting and grading of a natural, steeply-sloped wooded parcel to excess against policy and in the end produces a pattern at a density against policy." In closing, the implementation of Nashville Next and subdivision requests is further reinforced by the court. The affirmation, authority, and obligation of the commissioners to disapprove in the content of the general plan itself, quote, "Nashville Next should guide development decisions including regulations, rezonings, subdivisions, and capital improvements."
Thank you, and just if you could wipe.
I'm going to wipe down.
Yeah.
George and I share the same germs anyway, so I can wipe down.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Allow me the ritual.
Okay. Sorry.
I'm going to breathe now. I'm sorry.
It's hard to talk, man. So, thank you. Here we go. There we go.
These are not mine. I'm just gonna take everything.
Thank you. All right. Welcome.
Hi. Welcome back. I, myself, have only hugged my family for the first time this week, so thank you for being brave and being here. My name's Elise Hudson. I'm representing District 3 Connect. Thank you for the five minutes. I live currently at Whites, 4601 Whites Creek Pike, but we're redoing the house at 536 Brick Church Lane and right next to where this is proposed. So, if you look at your handy-dandy notebook, I'm gonna start out with talking about the CO policy. That's in your tab one, and balancing T3NE and C3 policy on slide four. So, if you'll look at the proposed area in the center where they're putting the fire recreation pit, and we'll have some other folks talk to this later, the recreation areas here and along the west slope are indeed in CO policy, but there are areas of CO policy in the top northeast and sort of central west side as well. So, there's no transition here from rural to urban density. And if you look at the intent of the CO design, it said, or CO policy, it says, "The intent is to keep undisturbed environmentally sensitive land features." The cluster lot option is also out of compliance, and that's in the code. So, if you look at tab two, so the slides seven and eight, so Metro Nashville Code, 7.12.090, and the cluster lot option, the three things that are the intent of the cluster lot option are flexibility of design, creating open space, preservation of natural features. This particular property, the way that it is done with the cluster lot, would provide no extra space, no extra open space, no extra amenities, passive, active, than a regular traditional design here. It is a de facto code, or excuse me, a de facto zoning change without any full, you know, community input on it. So, we haven't met flexibility of design because it's a standard lot. We haven't created any open, extra open space that would have, would have not been there if they had to do traditional building, and we're not preserving very much of the natural features. That whole west area that's on the steep slopes would have been bound by the TVA lines, and they couldn't have built on it anyway. So, in terms of the recreational facilities themselves, that doesn't meet the code either. They're defined as needing to be in usable open space. Both of those areas are on steep slopes that would not have been able to be built on. There is no usable space in these open areas. They also haven't defined, there's a technicality, they haven't defined the percent of each phase of open space, so the law says that they have to have 15% open space of the acreage of each phase. That's not even listed on any of the plans right now. It says that you can't do any construction, excuse me, I lost my place. There's a fire pit in the center that is located on the existing cliff that you talked about, so that is a straight drop cliff. There's pictures of that in the photo section on tab three. Even though they're claiming it's not natural, they're going to regrade that to a 50% slope, and that's still outside of what the regulation allows for those recreation areas. In addition, there's safety issues. The full back part of this property, right next to the stormwater retention pond, is a 7,000-volt electric security fence. So, there are 18 lots that back up to that fence, where their yards back up to that 7,000-volt fence. There are 16 that back up to the stormwater retention pond, between it and the electric fence. In addition, the neighborhood is vehemently, almost unanimously opposed to this. So, as of today, on our petition, there were 163 signatures. Eighty-nine of them were in Whites Creek or District 3, ZIP Code 37207. I'd like to just have everybody in the hand, everybody in the room raise your hand if you're opposed to this. Okay? Thank you. And the compromise that they talked about in removing three lots from their original proposal off of Brick Church Lane directly, and adding 10 feet additional space on three lots in the back of Buffer Zone, we greatly appreciate it, but that is penance compared to what we have been concerned with and asking for. The area that they're talking about for the site distances, they have to cut out over a sensitive area of CO and stormwater to make that happen. I'm really surprised stormwater is allowing it. So, again, I'll state that this lot, if you had built it as in, as is in the traditional area, it would not have any less open space than with the cluster lot. Therefore, the cluster lot is not appropriate. We know you have disapproved for other, other similar lots like that, so we ask that you do the same. Thank you so much for your time. This has been a long journey. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. All right, so I'll go ahead and start.
Yeah.
Are we good for me to start?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. My name's William Worrell. I'm at 4115 Dry Fork Road in Whites Creek. I'm Vice Chair of the Nashville Tree Conservation Corps, and I'm a licensed professional engineer. I specialize in civil and environmental engineering. I've designed and overseen the construction of roads and facilities located on steep terrain, including when deployed to Afghanistan. I'm also a federal environmental regulator. So, I'm speaking on behalf of the Nashville Tree Conservation Corps today. So, if you all will turn to the end of your binder, you'll, you'll find a presentation that I put together, an engineering analysis of Heartland North Proposal. There's 13 pages of summary from an engineering analysis that I performed. In summary, the engineering analysis demonstrates that this subdivision proposal, as currently proposed, does not satisfy multiple sections of the Metro Code, namely, the hillside development standards. It does not satisfy the subdivision regulations, Part 3-3 suitability of land. It also does not satisfy the Metro Public Works roadway design criteria. It does not satisfy the major incollector street plan. It does not satisfy National Next related to the conservation policy. So, I'll dive right in and try to go quickly through each item that I reviewed through my analysis of this proposal. If you'll go to page two, you'll see a zoom in of an area of lots. This area where the arrows are pointing was formerly proposed home lots. Through the process of the planning departments, those are steep slopes exceeding 20%. Through the planning departments, the applicant removed the home lots from that area that the red arrows point to. However, if you look at the grading plan, you'll see that while the, the house lots were removed, the entire site of those former house lots is completely regraded to be a flat bench. So, it does not satisfy the requirements of the Metro Code 1728030 because they are still impacting those areas of the proposed houses. I'm not sure what the point of removing the house is when you're regrading it. If you go to page three, this is another site with a similar situation. The existing contours are completely demolished, and a flat site is made. That was formerly a 25% plus slope. So, again, I'm not sure of the purpose of removing the actual house, and that does not satisfy the requirements of the code. If you go to page four, you'll see an area where I've looked at two different lots that are adjacent to one another. You'll see that the grading plan calls for an elevation differential between those two houses of 26 vertical feet, and a new proposed slope of 50% is proposed between the two houses. This is such that the, the yard of Lot 96 is about the same elevation as the top of the roof of Lot 131. Doesn't seem like a very, a very good plan. Next, on page five, you'll see there's actually a requirement in the code for contour grading and natural appearance requirements. Contour grading is a grading technique that's used to create more sustainable and natural appearing developments that blend with the natural terrain, and these are actually required per the code. If you look at the subdivision regulations, Part 3-3.6, you'll see that contour grading is a requirement and shall be used to provide a natural appearing transition between grades. The angle of the graded slope shall be gradually transitioned to the angle of the natural terrain. If you look at these diagrams, you can see what a contour grading appears like and what a traditional grading looks like. You can see that one looks more natural than the other. If you go to page six, you can look at the plan that is proposed. None of those contours are in keeping with the contour grading method, so this does not satisfy the Metro Nashville requirements in the subdivision regulations. Nashville Next also is requiring areas of steep slopes over 20% to remain on the site, and we see pictures from Nashville Next. It looks like I've run out of time, so I will not talk about the road design, but there's a clear alternative in which you could shift the road to avoid the 25% slope that was not presented. So, thank you very much. In summary, multiple areas of the code are not satisfied. Thank you for reviewing my report, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next? Oh, we need to make sure we wipe. Hold on one second. Let him wipe it.
He did have a mask, but that's fine.
No, no. No, no. We gotta keep with our plan here.
Sorry about that.
It's okay. And the microphone. Yeah. Pardon. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Good job. You're welcome.
Okay.
I also had a visual to put up as well. It was of the Whites Creek watershed.
I believe that was included in the SharePoint file.
Okay, so it's not, it's not gonna be up there? Okay, fine.
Right. It would have been, if it was sent digitally, we would have included it in the SharePoint file, but we wouldn't have printed it out.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm ready whenever you guys.
Go ahead.
Please. All right. Planning commissioners and staff, thank you for your service to our city. My name is Zach Dear. I live at 681 Brick Church Lane in Whites Creek. Today, I'm speaking on behalf of the Whites Creek Waterhead, Watershed Association Alliance, and my neighbors who unanimously reject this High Wire Act for development. Before I go into the specifics about the Whites Creek watershed, I wanted to start off with a Washington Post quote from Mayor John Cooper after our last major flood event on March 28th of this year. He says, quote, "We are grateful to realize that this is not 2010, but the seven-inch rain, are we in a world where we have to anticipate that more frequently than every 10 years or more years? And are, and are we ready for 10 inches should that happen? Are we ready for this event to happen again?" Cooper said. "I'm going to challenge my colleagues in metro government to have a response that's appropriate to the kind of climate conditions that we seem to be entering into." Metro Stormwater's very own Roger Linsley recently commented that, "We watch how Whites Creek just flows out of its banks with a 10-inch rain. No amount of green infrastructure is gonna really prevent that. In Whites Creek, we have some, we have scores of houses that are going to be impacted by an eight or nine or 10-inch rain, just in one major creek basin." And if you look at the map, you can see that the Whites Creek watershed is Davidson County's largest watershed, and also almost completely contained within the top half of Davidson County. It's big. It's really big. "North of the Cumberland, the headwaters begin in a very steep forested hills and quickly, powerfully flow into the Cumberland. The resulting flash flooding can be fatal in addition to extremely costly. The way to think about it is, if downtown is Nashville's heart, then the Whites Creek watershed and its extensive tree canopy are its kidneys and lungs. You simply can't live without any of them." During a March 29th community meeting, one day after the massive flooding that killed six people in Davidson County, the Pulte Sentex engineer agreed that this was, quote, "A difficult site, I'll tell you. We went from a fully treed condition to a grass and impervious condition. That's a large swing." In Nashville Next, it states that woodlands play a key role in watershed health, serving as headwater areas that are protected by tree cover, vegetation, and undisturbed soils. The deep tree roots absorb water, slow water runoff, and filter water, thereby providing both water quality and quantity services. Even if every roof, parking surface, yard, and gutter could store runoff, it would still approximate only 60 to 70% of the water removed, water removal provided by natural forests, native forests, excuse me. If stormwater is strategically trying to mimic nature, this is a dubious start. Mother Nature always wins, and this development surely doesn't consider the future sea level rises. It's a disaster not only waiting to happen, but one that will contribute to flash flooding almost immediately. Adding extra bio retention and detention ponds that can and do fail don't help us sleep better at night. And if you really look closely, it's also an environmental justice issue. Build $400,000 houses upstream and buy out minority households downstream. In closing, I'd like to applaud fellow Whites Creek resident and current Commissioner Jim Lawson for his comments from last month's meeting comparing Whites Creek developers to cicadas. I'm sure he only gotten, I'm sure he got hot water for that one, I'm sure. I do want to disagree a little bit, though, because fortunately, cicadas only come out every 17 years. Whites Creek developers are a little more persistent. I'd also like to thank all the community members who participated in our Creek cleanup, and a heartfelt thank you to all Nashville residents who wrote letters and signed petitions and showed up in order to stand up and protect our city's important green space. I, we beg you to use your judicial authority and answer Mayor Cooper's call to do better by siding with a community who's 100% opposed to this development over out-of-town developers who will be long gone for the first time this site fails. Please disapprove this bill and think about ways to protect this watershed and therefore your city. Thank you for your time and service.
Thank you, sir. And please wipe. Yep. And then, thank you. Keep sanitizing.
Get everything. Please wipe.
Thank you. Welcome.
Oh, I have to read. I'm sorry. Hello, my name is Wesley Hudson. I'm at 527 Brick Church Lane, directly across the street. I was born and raised in the houses that this surrounds. Of course, I'm in opposition. For its entire existence, Whites Creek community has been full of farms, livestock, and crops. My family has raised soybeans, eggs, hay, cattle, and at times even on the neighbor's property. My wife and I are currently doing hay or in the process of putting cattle back on our land. Everyone that surrounds this proposed development are what I like to call lifers, families with multiple generations living on the farm, living in the original farmhouses, and later generations building their own houses. Their plans are to stay and hand these houses down to the next generations. As you can see, we're a tight-knit community with tight family ties. We have put our properties in the Green Belt to help preserve it, and almost everyone on the street is in the process of applying for downzoning to AR2A from where our zoning was changed without our knowledge years ago. A development like this goes against the intent of Nashville Next. It leapfrogs over transitional policy, that being agricultural or a pattern already established on Brick Church Lane, to urban density. This area has existed boundaries of I-24 and Bradley Parkway. The street is a converted dirt road with no shoulders, a large hill and a sharp curve that when it snows, Metro schools use it to check whether to open or not. The worst visibility on the road is the two places they have proposed to put their accesses, halfway up a hill and just around the curve. We understand there'll be development in this area, but the community wants a responsible development that's here for the long haul. Quality, long-lasting brick homes. I built my home out of concrete. Storms for one reason, is much, in a much less dense environment. Whites Creek's under attack, and we need your help again. A sincere thank you for your time and service. Without you, we would have no way to voice our concerns.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Whoa.
Thank you. I didn't need your germs.
Welcome.
Hi. My name's Marcella Hudson, and I live at 527 Brick Church Lane, and I've lived there for over 30 years. My husband's family's been living there since the 1890s. As he, my husband previously mentioned, currently, we're under the Green Belt program and are working to restore our farm. We're both retired metro employees on a pension, so we're not rich. We did have to build a new home because the home we lived in was an 1800s farmhouse and was beyond repair. But we are rich because we're lucky to have inherited this beautiful property. We could never have afforded this land. Generations of our family have gone, so now, we're the older generation with children, grandchildren, and even great-grandchildren, and we intend for this to stay in our family. Because many of our neighbors feel the same, we have started the process to apply to downzone to AR2A. Most of the property owners between Most of the property owners between Trail Hollow and Knight Drive on the north side have already signed on. So far, we represent over 170 acres with many more interested. Nine years ago, the planning department started the Nashville Next program and asked for public input. The Whites Creek Bordeaux residents responded in huge numbers. During those meetings, our family property, including the property surrounded, kept getting pulled out of the rural policy and repeatedly asked for it to be, stay in. So it felt like there were plans for our family property even back then. Since then, it feels like properties like ours have gone under the knife. Approving this across the street is as good as starting the clock on our property. So we're asking you to use the tools in your hands, use the policy, the boundaries of the area, the unsuitability of the proposal, and the natural spaces it wipes out to do what you know is right. If you can't use the policies set forward in Nashville Next, then what was it even for? Thank you for your work and your time for listening to me.
Thank you. Anybody else? Welcome. We appreciate you coming.
Thank you. I'll try to get through this. My wife and I are the people that own the 20 acres that they're surrounding. My family's lived there for six generations. I understand the need for affordable housing in this county, but by putting 180 clustered lot houses on a street that has established houses with 16-acre average lots and large homes is not harmonious with our neighborhood. Nashville Next said this area should be treated with care. 180 clustered lot houses is certainly not doing that. Please help our community. We are not against development, just unreasonable, non-harmonious development. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Oh, thank you for sanitizing. We got you. We got you, Kevin.
She takes care of him.
All right. Who's next? Welcome.
Hey, how you doing?
Good.
David Wells. I live at 3460 Knight Drive, just Catty Corner from this proposed development. I was the liaison for the Nashville Next community, design plan for this community. I moved to Whites Creek because of its bucolic nature, its proximity to all the farms. I am a farmer by trade. I'd just like to point out that, you know, while we're preserving this land, we are preserving the resiliency of Nashville, not only in its propensity to flood, but also its food security and economic stability that this whole area was founded on was agriculture, as it's shown in the seal of Tennessee. There's the food design plan, or excuse me, the food, let's see here. Metro Nashville Food Study said that there is $6 billion annually that's lost in Nashville due to us outsourcing food. This area in Whites Creek has 180,000 arable acres of land that could be used to feed Nashville for the coming decades. We're a very food insecure city, as we saw from COVID and the last hurricane, significant portions of our supply chain were disrupted. I was one of the only ones in Nashville that was able to supply the restaurants locally, felt very fortunate to have a food supply that I could supply the city. And I just wanted to point it out that, again, we have 180,000 acres of arable land in Nashville. That's way more than any other city of this density has. So I hope you honor that and recognize that that is a benefit. It's not just about preserving farmland for its bucolic nature, it's preserving farmland for the resiliency of Nashville. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Next? Who wants to go next? Anybody else? Make sure we get everybody in the audience.
Call in the phone lines.
Yep. Anyone else in person? Okay, so now we are going to go to calls. So now we are ready to take calls from members of the public who wish to call in. Your screen should show the call-in number now. Please call in. You do not need to wait to call in because we put you in a queue system. As a reminder, you'll have two minutes. Please state your name and address for the record, whether you oppose or support the position. You have two minutes. Sean will, because we don't have a timer on the telephone, Sean will let you know when you have 30 seconds left of your two minutes, and then also when your time is up. And so, Sean, do we have any callers in the queue?
Chair, we do have callers, so we'll get the first one in, and I'll let you know when you have them in the meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Chair, you have the first call.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. I am Marcia Stenberg-Murphy. I reside at 4462 Stenberg Road in Whites Creek. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to share the historical significance of Whites Creek on behalf of the Whites Creek Historical Society, and as such, we have been granted five minutes. We would like to stand in opposition to this request. Whites Creek is recognized as a unique historic district by the Secretary of the Interior and the National Park Service, making it significant as an agricultural community with its architecture and cultural contributions which deserve continued preservation. This community was established December 24, 1779, before Nashville was a city or Tennessee was a state. It has been a survivor of the frontier and wars with the abundance of white street producers, darekeepers, and outlaws. Its sons fought and died alongside David Boone in our struggle for statehood. It has been the cradle of Nashville's education system, renowned after the area's first teacher, Zachariah White, with other visionary focus Eli Green, who obtained a large foundation from Cornelius Vanderbilt to launch Vanderbilt University, his granddaughter Julia Green, Nashville's first female school superintendent, and is home to Adrian Battle, Nashville's first African-American female Davidson County school superintendent. In the national historic district and beyond, there are witness structures to the Trail of Tears, numerous antebellum homes and mills. In the last 100 years, Whites Creek was known as Little Swifterland, due to its over 40 dairies that supplied milk and wheat for the city. The culture of Whites Creek is where I would like to focus for a minute. We are one of Nashville's most diverse communities with documented settlements dating back to 3,300 B.C. In our fields and hollows, there are countless families who have been here quietly working to teach, feed, and keep Nashville safe for generations. One of these community members is the Hudson family, with generations of firefighters and paramedics who continue to serve on the front line for our city. The proposed syntax development will demolish two local cemeteries tied to the original Love family of the famous Brick Church, and clear cut the forested area. Nashville subdivision regulations in Nashville Next require speech-薄 areas to be maintained in a natural state. This plan calls for these ropes to be bulldozed and replaced with artificial floats that are far steeper. According to the 2019 census, the median income for Whites Creek is between 54,000 and 69,000. By democratic demographic analysis alone, companies like Dollar General and Pulte Homes select us as appropriate for their lowest-quality bargain basement syntax home products, rather considering the value of our vision, our frugal history, our culture, or our sinful community. North Nashville has been besotted with the city dump, the state prisons, and our community has been affected by I-24, altering the structure and connectivity of who we are. It is time for our city government to respect and support the vision of our well-articulated plan for a unique rural community set forth in the broader Whites Creek community plan in the Nashville Next process. We ask that the commission support our vision for a rural pattern of development that respects our history, our culture, and our future by disapproving this low-quality, cookie-cutter, overly-dense development in this natural habitat. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have a lot of uncomfortable pauses.
Chair, you have the next caller.
All right. Thank you, Sean. Next caller, you're recognized.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Director Kemp, Planning Staff, and everyone who's taken the time to be there today. My name is Jennifer Hayden-Deere. I live with my husband Zach Dear, nine-year-old son, and five-year-old daughter. I'm five and a half acres at 681 Brick Church Lane here in Whites Creek. First, I'll say again, let me thank you for your service, because I was sitting in your seat when this matter first came before the commission in 2017. I can say our family fully recognizes the time and energy and importance of what you give to our city and your role. And let me be clear as well, the planning commission has the authority to review the specific elements of this concept plan. It's not limited to the staff report or what the developer claims is above and beyond what is required. You have the authority, and I would dare say the obligation, given what you now know about the reality of this plan and the disproportionate impacts it has on our character of our community and our city, to disapprove this concept plan. You have at least two grounded legal reasons within your authority. One, this is an abuse of the cluster lot option. It contravenes the goal's intense specific requirement for that option. It fails the goals of the cluster lot option. It does not result in flexible design. It's a blanket of outdated sprawl, mindless to its surrounding rural character, and it lacks any meaningful transition, and that is clear. It does not create open space. It only leaves scraps and remnants, buffers and holding ponds, and unsuitable and buildable areas. The developer and the community specifically said that this was a difficult lot, and that they really would never give us how much buildable land they were preserving. And most of all, this is not a transition. This is like kind of saying go from an edg to a fully grown fog within 24 hours. This is not a transition. This is not suitable to T3 any, and it shouldn't even be in that policy, but you have two clear reasons to disapprove of this, and we respectfully ask that you do so for us and our family. Thank you.
Thank you. And we appreciate you calling in. Next caller, Sean. Welcome.
Chair, you have the next caller. Hello, my name is Dale Hyer, and I reside at 4225 Cecil Court, South Nashville 37207. And I am also in opposition to this proposed development. I agree with all of the statements and facts that have been stated by the, by the previous figures who were opposed to this. And some of them echo the fact that it's way too dense for this area. This area is a rural setting. It has got too many houses packed in there, and also the open space is not usable as is required. So that, that rules out the, or should rule out the option for the cluster lots, which should appropriately reduce the density. Also, that's on a very narrow two-lane road, Brick Church Lane, and also Brick Church Lane empties out into another two-lane road, Brick Church Pike, which has got lots of traffic on it. In fact, they're building another subdivision just up the street, up Brick Church Pike. So that's going to add a lot of traffic right there on a, on a two-lane road, and there's no sidewalks throughout the overwhelming majority of Brick Church Pike up through there, and it's, I believe that's going to cause traffic problems. So for those reasons, I would request that you deny this development.
Caller, you have 30 seconds.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir, for calling in. Sean, next caller. Welcome. You may begin.
Hi, my name is Kim Walker. I live at 3925 Stevens Lane. I'm not going to repeat everything my neighbors have said so well, so I'm going to respectfully ask that you disapprove the proposed development. It goes against the Nashville Next plan, and it's definitely not going to be an asset to our established rural community. And I just beg you to listen to the neighbors, and please not ignore their desires and concerns for the future of our area. Once Whites, once rural Whites Creek is gone, I mean, we've lost it forever, and it's just very special to so many of us and for Nashville. Thank you so much for your time and for listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, Sean.
Chair, you have the next caller.
Welcome. You may begin.
Yes, hello?
Hello, we can hear you. You may begin.
Very good. I can hear you, too. Thank you for having us here today, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Lisa Proctor. I live at 4129 Dry Fork Road in Whites Creek, and I am in opposition to the proposed development. I emailed you some documents on Tuesday and hope they found their way to your desk. If not, they're on the SharePoint. I did find them there. Two of them were USDA NRCS web soil surveys showing local roads and streets and dwellings. The other was an aerial map showing the location of the 2019 landslide on I-24 just near the proposed development. The soil maps show that this parcel's soils are rated, quote, "very limited" for streets and roads, end quote, "very limited," and end quote, "somewhat limited" for dwellings. Based on the fact that a landslide occurred on I-24 in 2019, not far from this parcel, the soils could very well be unsuitable for development because of instability. The fact that photography is a poor fit, flooding is and will continue to be a severe issue in Whites Creek with the increasing frequency and severity of weather events. We are very concerned that the development will only increase flooding and have detrimental environmental impact by cutting down thousands of existing.
Caller, you have 30 seconds.
Our tree canopy is vital to the health of this area and county. All of the increased development in Whites Creek will eventually turn our community into the next Mill Creek flooding crisis. You have the authority to change the course for us, and I implore you to do so. Please look at the big picture here. This community has spoken loud and clear to our wishes to remain rural, preserve our open spaces and natural environment.
Caller, your time has expired. Please complete your time. Please complete your time.
-support farming and agriculture, and this does not constitute rural planning for us. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next caller, Sean?
Chair, we have no additional callers in the queue for this item.
Okay. Thank you very much. So seeing that we have no additional callers, we are ready for rebuttal. Two minutes.
Jim Murphy again. Just a few quick points. The plans for this project have been reviewed and approved by all Metro agencies for compliance with all metropolitan government requirements. The cluster lot option, there was a comment that there was not more open space than would be required in a traditional subdivision, but that's not a requirement contained in the cluster lot option language of the zoning code. So requiring a developer to meet that requirement would be arbitrary and capricious because it's not set forth in the zoning code. The hillside development standards do not permit, do not prohibit changes in grade, cleared areas, and volumes of cut and fill on slopes of hillside portions of the property with 20% integrator slope. They just provide that it should be minimized, which is occurring here. Then from the community plan compliance standpoint, the community plan provides specifically for the use of lot clustering techniques to preserve environmentally sensitive areas over, and it prioritizes that, over consistency with surrounding lot and right-of-way patterns. So to say that this project is inconsistent with the community plan because it uses the cluster lot option is inconsistent with the language contained in the community plan. Finally, to the extent that neighbors are consenting that the Planning Commission can use the community plan to reduce the permitted zoning for this property, that the control of zoning is a, I mean, control of density is a zoning power which is vested solely in Metro Council. Planning Commission lacks the zoning power. I think my time's up, so I will stop at this point.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Now we are ready for the council lady. And if you, Mr. Murphy, if you'll-
Let me clean up real quick.
Yes, yeah, clean up. Appreciate that. I've never seen a lawyer dust a table before, but that's good.
I have plenty of skills.
Just joking.
You haven't been to my house for real.
Counsel lady, welcome.
Thank you so much, and it's good to see you all in person after a year of meeting virtually. Thank you, Commissioners, for your service, and also I appreciate all of those community members that have come here today to speak on this issue, that have called in and sent emails regarding, regarding this proposed development. There has been meaningful community engagement regarding this project since February 2021, including two virtual community meetings with 50-plus residents in attendance, information shared through newsletters and social media, and direct discussions with nearby neighbors. During this engagement, some community members and I expressed concerns about the density of the homes and lack of infrastructure to support the increase of traffic. While the developers are working within the current land use policy and zoning, we felt that the concept plan should mirror the density of surrounding subdivisions in the area, and improvements needed to be made to address an already strained traffic infrastructure. Since then, the Pulte Group has made improvements to the concept plan, including reducing the number of lots from 193 to 180 and adding turning lanes at the intersection of Brick Church Lane and Brick Church Pike. In addition, the developer has agreed to make a financial contribution, which you've heard about, $80,000, to support Metro, in conducting a regional traffic assessment within the vicinity of this project, which is needed to work towards improving the overall traffic infrastructure in the community. I believe these improvements address most of the neighbors' concerns and will make the project more beneficial to the community. Also, with single-family homes for sale ranging in price from $300,000 to $400,000, I believe this development will provide much-needed housing options for middle-income families to invest in and enjoy the quality of life that a suburban community in District 3 offers. Now, we, we received about 70 or so emails in opposition to this project, but I noticed in those emails that only about 10 or 15 of them are from people who live in the district, and about half of those actually live in the immediate area where this project is being proposed, and, and those individuals did not participate in our community engagement meetings. Also, in 2019, I spoke against the proposed change of the policy from T-3 suburban to the T-2 rural, and the reason for that is because while I was campaigning in 2019, I knocked on over 3,000 doors in the district. And what I heard a majority of the people say is that they, they want more quality housing for middle-income families. They want more commercial and, and responsible development and retail. And I think this development does that. While I appreciate all of the comments said here today, and particularly the Hudson family, and I, and I understand their concerns, I think there's a way that we can work together so that we can maintain the diversity that this district has. Our district is, is urban, is suburban, is rural, and I think we can find a balance to maintain the rural while enhancing the urban and suburban areas of the district. And I am very happy and willing to work with the community like I have been and, and even before I was elected and will continue to do in making sure that we maintain that balance. So for those reasons, I support the staff recommendation to approve with conditions and ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. I appreciate you coming. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed, and so we will start our discussion. Vice Chair, do you want to go first? I always give either hardest cases you or Commissioner Haynes.
Thank you for the honor. Well, thank you all so much for, for coming out tonight and for the, well, all of the comments. I was actually very impressed with the, the detail and the comments that were provided on this case, and particularly what the Nashville Tree put together. I thought that was a very thoughtful analysis, very helpful analysis, so thank you. I, I do have quite a few questions about this one, and I am glad to know we had heard it three years ago because it seems so familiar, and I was glad for the history. But I definitely see a lot of concerns, and I think that the neighbors have raised a lot of very, very valid concerns with this one. I guess, starting, can we talk a little bit about the grading plan and how that is considered on the lots with steep slopes? I understand there's no building lots within that, but what will be happening with the road grading? Also curious to understand a little more about this cliff and what the cliff is, and then what the Nashville Tree showed in terms of, of the 50% grade change between some of the homes and how that fits into this overall evaluation.
So I'm going to talk generally about grading, and then if I miss anything that you particularly want me to highlight, then please certainly let me, let me know. So I've pulled up a preliminary grading plan that's on your screen here that indicates areas where there would be grading. So what we look at, the hillside standards indicate that areas of 20% or greater that disturbance should be minimized. And so there's not an exact, you know, there's not an exact percentage or, or how much of it can be disturbed. It just says minimized. And so staff found that it was minimized. The Planning Commission could certainly look at it, and if they found a different determination, then, then you would direct staff to look at that. Some of the areas, I've lost my mouse. Oh, there we go. So where this road comes in here, there is disturbance to some 25% natural occurring slopes that are in this area here. And so that is one area where there are 25% slopes that are being disturbed. There is some disturbance here where this cliff is that is, that was referenced several times, which has been indicated to us that it's man-made, that it wasn't a naturally occurring slope, that it was man-made, that was part of utilization of this project, of this property during construction of nearby interstates. The conservation policy is really intended to sort of protect naturally occurring slopes. We did ask them to stay off of, we did ask them to keep lots off of those areas to the south, but there is some grading that's occurring. But the area of natural occurring slopes that are being disturbed are primarily here along this portion of the road, and then also, I've got new glasses, and I have to figure them out. There's also some disturbance here in this area, which is being left open but is being disturbed, but is being graded out on the rear.
I mean, given the intent with the cluster lot is to try to protect the natural features, you know, it definitely raises concern to me to see this much disturbance to steep slopes. I think that's, you know, that definitely seems like, like a concern to me. I'm also curious about the White's Creek Community Character Manual, and, you know, I remember when we were going through this and looking at the, the different lots, and I remember the discussion that pulled this one out, and then the subsequent conversation about not rezoning it. That said, it's pretty clear that we expect this area to be treated differently and to take into account some connection to the surrounding rural area. And to me, that means that there should be some sort of thoughtful design to try to integrate the, the more dense suburban pattern to the surrounding rural area. And when I see a subdivision of all equal-sized lots and exactly the same homes, to me, that's not consistent with what we're thinking about for that transition from urban to rural. So I don't know if there's so many, anything you can shed light on from the discussions you had or kind of thoughts about whether or not this is consistent with what our thinking was in the Community Character Manual?
Lisa, if you, I'm going to make a brief comment, and then if you could talk a little bit, I keep getting corrected from upstairs. I need to talk into the, if you could talk a little bit about the, the process again for review of concept plans, just so we know what phase that we're in. But I, I do think that the Community Character Manual would encourage a diversity of housing and integration with kind of the natural features in a creative way. You know, our goal was certainly first and foremost to protect the most intense of the natural features in the northwestern portion of the site area, and I think that we've accomplished that. But if you wanted to ask whether, you know, at the edges of the rural areas or transitions, if there's something that the staff need to consider, we can do that. Typically, we would not have information about how the housing is going to meet the grade, if you will, at this level, at this phase of development, but it's always helpful for you to put sort of your concerns and questions on the table so that the applicant can hear what those are and respond meaningfully. So Lisa, can you show that slide that shows the three steps as well? But I think, again, the concept plan is your opportunity now to sort of express the goals that you would want to have and direct the staff accordingly and the applicant accordingly.
Did you want me to, I'm sorry? So a concept plan is generally going to give you, it's the step in the process where you're doing what it says, you're establishing the concept of the subdivision. And then the second step is the final site plan, and that is where we're looking at detailed construction plans for the roads, detailed grading plans, et cetera. And then final plot is the second, is the last step. There can be changes between concept plan and final site plan. When someone gets out and actually gets into the real world and does the detailed engineering plans, there can always be changes between concept plan and final site plan, so long as it's consistent with the general concept of the subdivision.
I can tell, the only other thing I would add is, in principle, if I were choosing between adding a variety of lot sizes and weighing that with preserving natural features for an area like this, I, I would weigh preserving natural features, and that's what the policy directs us to do. Having said that, you've heard the interest in ensuring that the housing types are thoughtfully integrated into the slopes, and I think you can ask those questions and get information there, and, and we could talk about transitions. We made steps towards transitioning by removing lots on Brick Church as a way of attempting to do that. You can perhaps, given your questions, ask if the transitions were sufficient. So I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't know at this point if the transition is sufficient. I mean, it's, it's hard to tell. I recognize that there has been some reduction in the density back on Brick Church Lane, but, you know, I, I don't know. It's, it's, it's pretty hard to say that, that that is at all consistent with the kind of rural development character across Brick Church Lane and in all of the surrounding area. So yes, I think I would feel better if there was some diversity of lot size and just in general to integrate that entire area with the surrounding character. I think that's, it's, given how, I mean, it, it appears to me that there are some real concerns with the steep slopes, and how the houses integrate with the, with the area is really important. That grading plan is really important to make sure that we can see that we truly are minimizing the impact on the, minimizing the impact. You know, I think I watched some of the community meeting, and, and I did see the neighbors that are here participating in that. But one of, the comment that was made about the extensive work that's being done to mitigate the runoff, you know, if, if we are truly minimizing the impact on those central, those, those natural features, I, it just seems like such extensive mitigation wouldn't be necessary to make sure that we are addressing the stormwater concerns. So that, that did raise some concerns for me. I'm going to keep listening to everyone else and, and kind of see where we go from there.
Commissioner Tebbs?
Yeah, I too want to really commend the neighbors for such a good information packet. In many ways, I wish I had more time to go through it because there's good information here that I think does give us a lot more opportunity to ask questions. I'm just going to ask a little bit about the cluster lot. Can you just describe to me, Lisa, I, I was following it, then I wasn't following it, just how this complies? You know, I'm reading some of the information they have where the density is all fine. Do you mind just reiterating that part to me first of all?
Sure. The cluster lot is a byright provision that essentially allows you to reduce the lot sizes. So it's not an increase of density. It's not a rezoning. It is an allowance that's in the code that lets you make smaller lots in exchange for the provision of common open space. It allows you to put some of those areas that are constrained, like the areas in the northwest portion of this site that are steep slopes, it allows you to put those constrained areas into open space to be preserved. So essentially, you take the overall square, the overall acreage of the property, you take out 15% for roads, infrastructure. The remaining 85%, you just divide out by the lot size that's required, in this case 10,000 square feet. And so that results in 242 lots. That's called your lot yield. And so that's how many lots you essentially could have. And so that's how many lots you essentially could have. They're proposing 180. And so once you get the lot yield, for R10, you can cluster down two lot sizes. And so R10, R8, R6, so they can cluster down to six, which means that they can have 6,000 square foot lot sizes. This is the option that is encouraged for single-family residential developments where there are constrained areas. You're required to have a minimum of 15% open space per phase. And we have found that they do have that for, they have about 24 acres overall, about 18% in Phase 1 and 82% in Phase 2, that's where the larger area of open space is in the, in the northwest side. Does that, does that help?
Actually, that was great. I appreciate that. Cause I, that seemed to be one of the issues, Lisa, I was getting a little hung up on. You know, and I agree with Vice Chair Farr that our concern about some of the, especially the conservation part of it all with, with this development, it seems like they've met the requirements of the, you know, the cluster lot requirement, I guess, I'm saying that word twice. But, but I, there's, there is still something about the way this is, you know, fits within it that now I feel like it is quite a lot and I wish there was a way, maybe there could be a, maybe more of a different, you know, maybe a diversity of lot sizes or, but anyway, it seems like where I was going with honestly, more exciting with the neighborhood was kind of on that cluster lot, but it does, by your explanation, it does seem that it follows the right pattern through. I think I too, I'm gonna listen and I may have some follow-up questions later on, but I'm gonna listen to the rest of my commissioner's comment.
Commissioner Blackshear?
I'd like to reiterate what Commissioner Farr said about the, just the information that folks have presented to us, both the applicant and the neighborhood, this is never an easy thing, anything that White's Creek brings to us is never easy and there's certainly a lot of information to digest. And so I appreciate you doing it in a really thoughtful and clear manner. And maybe it's just the lawyer in me, but I wanna get back into what our role is and making sure that I'm keeping that straight in my head. So we have, I think, two questions and our council, please correct me if I'm wrong, we're looking at whether the subdivision regulations have been complied with and the second question would be whether the general plan is not being contradicted, is that right?
Yes, you wanna make sure that, that's, that's correct. You're looking at whether it complies with the zoning code, complies with the subdivision regulations and is not contradicted by any other source of law. And that would include the general plan.
Okay, I appreciate that. And so what I think we've heard today from the neighbors is that we've seen arguments that the subdivision, subdivision regulations have not been complied with and I think, I'm looking particularly at the, the transition argument, the angle of any graded slope shall be gradually transitioned and whether that's, whether that's in agreement with the subdivision regulations. And then, of course, we've heard many arguments that the plan is not, the plan is not being followed and what is being proposed is not comporting with the plan and the plan is in fact being contradicted. And so this is a lot of information for me to digest right here. And I was wondering whether the staff had seen any of this information before and whether this particular set of arguments and materials were, I guess, considered by you when developing the staff's analysis.
Well, before we get to that, I wanna make a statement just to, for the commissioners to consider is that we have, you're absolutely right, Commissioner Blackshear, we've gotten a lot of information tonight. If you threw a rock in this room, you'd hit a lawyer, right? So there's a lot of folks on, on both sides that have provided very detailed information and it's a lot to absorb. But I think what is very helpful for the staff is what you have been presented tonight, ask questions, we'll try to air it out and then, you know, probably have to take a more, the staff's gonna have to take, I mean, I would feel more comfortable if the staff took a more detailed look. You got, you know, the commissioners, ask questions, state your concerns, and then that way, we give the staff something to work with on why it doesn't, if it, why you think it doesn't meet the, the plan or if it does meet the subdivision regulation. So that's, I think that would be helpful for them, so try to get out as many. I think the vice chair started asking those questions, so get your concerns out, anything that you're concerned about with the arguments from both sides. And then we probably, you know, I think that there's just so much information, I'm not sure that we can conclude the, you know, either an up or down vote on it tonight. That's just my, where I'm, what I'm feeling the commissioners.
Yeah, no, I completely agree with that, Chairman. I certainly am not ready to vote one way or another and I just, I mean, the staff literally are the experts in the room, so I'm just interested in the information that's being presented here, whether any of this is completely novel or whether it's something that you really did kind of take into consideration when making your analysis.
So we, we received over 100 emails on this item. Many of the emails included detailed information, but a lot of that was received either very near publication date or after publication. And so we would need time essentially to go through the, the materials that were presented.
Okay, no, I really appreciate that. I mean, I'm certainly, I agree with everything the prior commissioners have said, the questions. Obviously, I think, it was not obvious, but I do think that the arguments made in the packet were really thoughtful and I would like to take additional time to go through it. And I guess to the extent that there can be more directed questions, I can think more thoughtfully about that, I just don't wanna lob stuff out at you before I get a chance to really go through the notebook. But I certainly would be in favor of not making this decision today, but I'm absolutely interested in hearing what the other commissioners have to say.
Yeah, Commissioner, and I didn't, I just wanna make sure, you know, make sure you guys get as much of your questions out so that the staff, we can, you know, they can analyze it and look at it. I think you and I are very, very much in sync on that, that perspective. So thank you, that's very, very helpful. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So since we are kinda laying out our questions or gray area to the staff, I would like to ask probably the staff, my general concern is in this particular property. I understand since 2015, you know, White's Creek area has been largely discussed, but 11 property was the one like a highly, you know, discussed with which kind of policy to apply. So this, you know, particular lot was, for whatever the reason, end up with T3 neighborhood evolving. And so to me, you know, I am from West Middle Hillwood area, which is, is a typical suburban neighborhood area. And in my area, the only evolving policy applied is right next to the railroad where the post road meets Harding, you know, near the Sperry Steakhouse, that corner is the only evolving area. So I'm having kinda hard time imagining property adjacent to T2 rural maintenance become T3 neighborhood evolving. I could see, you know, T2 evolving considering, you know, surrounding area. So if you could, you know, bring to me the history and why is it appropriate to have T3 evolving in that area, I would be quite interested in.
So I, so I can address some of that now. I will say that there is no T2 evolving, so there are only rural maintenance and rural countryside and rural neighborhood center. So there's not a sort of a rural evolving, that's not really, that's just not a policy that we have. I will say that, no, this was not one of the 2000, one of the 11 properties that was pulled out in 2015 for further study in White's Creek, but this body did review a request to change it to rural in 2019 and did, and turned down that request in favor of maintaining the neighborhood evolving policy. A neighborhood evolving could be seen as a transitional area here between the rural and what's a much more intense district industrial policy to the south, as you can see on your screen in the dark blue area. The adjacency of this to I-24, that district industrial policy, a neighborhood evolving could be seen as a transition.
Thank you. So another concern of me is, you know, in this subdivision plot as it proposed, it has two entryway to Brick Church Lane, I believe, and then two stub lots to future development. One is 20 acre one property owner, another one is T2 rural maintenance area. So it's like, our purpose is to encourage existing, protecting existing environment and, you know, existing neighborhood and while introducing moderate density to the area. So the stub road in the maintenance and then also seems like west side of the lot parcel is just a block change, like a bunch of lot kind of finished to, you know, T2 rural maintenance area. So is there any kind of, you know, smooth transition if you were to, you know, consider instead of just, you know, five, six lots right next to the, you know, somebody backyard?
So both of the stub streets that are going in, so both of the planned stubs, stub streets are indicated into other areas of neighborhood evolving policy. And so you can see on your screen, you do have an area of neighborhood evolving to the west, so you don't immediately transition to rural maintenance. Sort of south of the, the creek is neighborhood evolving. And so both of the stub streets are actually into other areas of neighborhood evolving, not into rural.
Yeah, so west side in particular, so it stubborn to neighborhood evolving, but doesn't it go half to night drive or other property? It cannot go into the, you know, river, for sure.
We could see, I mean, there could be the potential and what we have to sort of think about is because we've got properties that are bisected by a stream, which have rural maintenance on one side and neighborhood evolving on another, there could be a scenario where those properties that are neighborhood evolving that are adjacent to the district industrial could develop in a more suburban pattern as their policy calls for and utilize the stub street from this so that you're not traversing the creek and going through the rural policy areas. And so this could be the, the place where they would get access to develop potentially those portions that are adjacent to the district industrial.
So since we are digesting, you know, lots of policy decision, you know, one of the, our development, we do have hillside development guideline and in that, you know, the, we are emphasizing view share, so that appropriate development versus not appropriate development. So clear cutting is not appropriate, but, you know, having trees and then kind of layers go down, so you will, do not see entire housing or building, but from afar, you will see like a portion of the housing and surrounded by tree. So that's the intent of the hillside development. And I don't see this according to the, you know, street pattern because some development, you know, they do have, because when you try to create this much lot, you know, you have to clear cut to, in order to install, you know, sewer system, water system and so forth. And then once those are installed, gradually you can have a new, you know, landscaping or reforesting. But in this case, I don't think, you know, I don't see any reforesting. And because of the, you know, stormwater regulation, you have to have contain, you know, fast one inch within that area. And I understand, you know, I thought it was really funny when I was watching Council Lady's community meeting. So developer was explaining in order to contain stormwater runoff, you have to have gigantic, you know, water preservation area, retention area, and then secondary retention area. So I think, you know, many stormwater people said tree is the least expensive and most great stormwater prevention and retention. So would it be possible, you know, to require reforestation? Because this, you know, it's just creating the lot, but not requiring any reforestation other than two, three per, you know, per lot.
Commissioner, we, let me, I might have to ask legal a question here. So when we, when we're talking about, we can't just make new requirements within the subdivision regulations. So I just ask that, we all have to be careful and I wanna ask the council, our council is, you know, are we, we can't require new types of things on the developer that are not in the subdivision regulations, does that make sense?
Yes, so let me ask you the rephrase a different way. So because our, you know, plan or general plan and regulation require, we do have hillside development guideline. So I would like to know the hillside development guideline and this proposed lot, considering slope of the street and so forth, would be able to accomplish those hillside development? That would be my question.
So the hillside development standards indicate that residential, that residential developments should minimize the cut and fill, cut and fill, clearing, grading of those areas that are 20% or greater. And so the majority of that area to the northwest has been placed in open space and would not be graded. There is that part that I talked about that would be graded with the road that you all could consider. But where they're clearing otherwise on the site, that wouldn't really fall under the hillside standards because those are not areas of 20% or greater slope. And so our subdivision regulations, our zoning code don't require, when you're dealing with residentially zoned properties, they don't require preservation of trees, except in those areas that maybe are 20% or greater where we're trying to minimize. It also doesn't prohibit, it just says minimize and that's something that you all can consider. But for the other parts of the site that are outside of 20%, there is not a restriction on removal of trees and they will simply have to meet TDU, tree density, for the subdivision.
Okay, thank you. I think, so for me, that's for me, you know, we do have a lot to digest, so I will keep listening, other commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner. Councilwoman Murphy?
Thank you. I will just start with my questions and I don't know why Lisa sat down. I've got some more, I'm sorry. Could you show us where like the greenway easement will be going? Do we have a map that shows any of that? Did I just miss it when it was being explained to us?
So they would, anywhere essentially where there's a stream buffer, the subdivision regulations would say that there would be a greenway easement, not necessarily construction, but just an easement. And that would be in this area here.
Okay, and so how far, it says that it, it hasn't been determined that easement yet, but at least 75 feet. How close to the walking trail or to the homes is that gonna go?
It would, it would generally just be, the buffer is generally that wide, so it would be within that buffer area.
Okay, so it'd fit in there. So in this area that's sensitive around the creek. So in this area that's sensitive around the creek, that's kind of the reason for the cluster lot option, is what is, it's sounding to me. But I think what's important for us to remember here is that there's a TVA easement in that same place, is that correct?
There is a TVA easement you can see here.
Okay.
Generally running here.
So it's not like they could build there anyway. And I'm concerned that we're getting, that it's, and maybe this is just an issue with the cluster lot subdivision options, is the fact that the sensitive area and this TVA easement is up in this left-hand corner of the property, and so they are able to cluster the entire project. And I guess in my mind, I would rather see something where it is clustered around or somehow tied to the sensitive features on the property. Maybe that's something that I'm missing that we could have some more explanation on at our next meeting or something, but I'm just concerned that this is a lot of very similar lots being designed here when the option is further away. And I guess I don't know if we have the application for the AR-2A yet in the system or whatever, but I guess something that I'd like to consider too is, it sounds like the lots around here, the property owners are wanting to downzone in lieu of having the policy that some of the property owners may want. And so my concern is, is do we know if the, where the stub road is going is one of those lots that is downzoning to AR-2A? And I'm interested if we don't have the application.
We have not received an application for a down, for any rezoning in this area for, to AR-2A.
Okay. And then I'm also, I too am concerned about just the amount of grading around the property and the fact that it looks like we're grade, they're grading or proposing to grade around the stormwater infrastructure. I assume that's to make the stormwater infrastructure more adequate or not, whatnot, but it just seems like, you know, a lot of times development comes before us where it's like, well, we're going to put the stormwater in property that we can't use, or this is a leftover piece that we wouldn't be able to put some homes on, so let's just put our stormwater there. And it's kind of like the back shed of the development. And I'm just, I'm concerned of how that, anytime we're grading in a watershed and with this much going on, it just concerns me. And I wish we had some more information on the applicant of why that was necessary or needed. And that kind of takes me as well to the, I mean, I get it that the state left over some dirt, sounds like more than just dirt in an area, but I don't think that, just because it's been left there, it's been there for a while, and so man-made qualities maybe not so applicable anymore, but the fact that they're going to grade through that, I think that could have been maybe a little bit more thoughtfully proposed to us. So those are kind of the concerns that pop out to me tonight is, is just the justification of clustering this when there are other pieces in play that kind of, for me, knock out maybe that option or the justification for that option. So I am interested in hearing everyone else as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Commissioner Sims?
I guess this is addressed to my fellow colleagues here on the commission. I so appreciate your technical knowledge and your, I mean, some of you are just plain geniuses and I'm in awe of you, but I'm going to take this a little different direction because you guys are experts in land use and my heart is really neighborhoods and kind of what their impacts on the neighborhood itself. And so if you'll just give me a minute to let, because I find this very emotional with a man that cried, a soul related to him. And so I hope I can get through this. When I taught policy at Vanderbilt for many years, so I came here thinking, okay, I can do this. And then I went, oh my gosh, this is some of the hardest policies I have ever tried to study in my whole life, and it truly has an impact on people. So I've been thinking about, why are these kinds of subdivisions so hard for those of us who sit up here? You know, we go through cases after cases after cases every two weeks, and yet this one, the subdivision ones always seem to get us, and particularly the ones that are these cottage industry kinds of stuff, my cottages here. And I think it's because policy is different than law, and we have a real decision we have to make here, whereas a lot of times I just feel like we're advising the council and thank God I don't have to make those decisions, I can give them my best advice, they can take it or leave it. In this case, we have to really do it though. And to make the wisest policy decisions we can possibly make, particularly when it really matters, we have to have lots of data. We don't. We need to have data that are really set into places where we can begin to study them and see, well, how did this work in this case and didn't in here? We don't. We actually have to have the intentions of, what is it we actually are, what are the consequences of this? If we go here, what's the consequence? If we go here, what's the consequence? And this is brand new kind of land that we haven't tried to do this before. We don't have policy evaluations anywhere. We don't have any of the sample size that we can say, well, we did it here and that's, we just don't have data. And without data, everything becomes subjective. And when I read the court case from the judge, the thing that came out in my head was, the commission is, are asked to make subjective decisions. They have to be made. And I wish it was so simple as to say, yes, no, yes, no, yes, no, but it can't be. And when it's not that way, what the best policy advisors in our country do is to say, there's one rule we have to really listen to. When you don't have the data, you don't have case studies of the kinds of consequences on this, then there's one rule, and there's a guy at the University of Chicago, one of the best policy schools in the world, states that the policy fails, even if it's successful in some ways, if it does not fundamentally achieve the goals that all public policy are set out to achieve, and that is to serve the public. And the opposition is very clear. It's kind of like what the neighborhoods have said, I hadn't heard one person say they want it. And, I mean, and we've been listening to this now for three years. And so it's not a check place. This is what are the people who have to live there long-term actually saying? And if they are saying something in opposition, then what do policy evaluations, policy studies, actually policy case studies tell us? Well, we don't have those. So in my case, I find this very difficult to not, I literally have, I literally almost cried with a man that cried, because we're putting a neighborhood in a no win. And I can't, I can't do that. And so what I encourage, what I encourage my colleagues is we can do better in shaping this policy. We can make better policies than this. And a lot of our policies are good, they've been vetted all over the neighborhoods, have gotten thousands of people, but we hadn't gotten it right yet with subdivisions and cottages. And so that, my heart is, I can't do this and hurt the neighborhood.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Lawson, Chairman?
I've, in listening to my fellow commissioners and the folks that are doing the presentation and our staff, and we do have a marvelous staff. This is one of those situations I hopefully rarely find myself in, and that is being able to make a definitive decision about something that has been presented. You know, to me, at this point, yeah, I need some more information before I can look and say, yes, this is, this is certainly in keeping with the general plan, yes, this is not inconsistent with what our neighborhood is, has said it wanted to look like. And that's kind of, again, it's a quandary for me. I live in White's Creek. I don't raise cicadas, but I live in White's Creek. And I participated in the National Next and all of the other planning issues, and this one is just tough for me to decide one way or the other.
Thank you, Commissioner Haynes.
So I'm going to disagree slightly with my peer, Dr. Sims, which I hate to do. I do think we got the policy correct. I was here six years ago when we debated White's Creek, ad nauseam, and pulled out 11 parcels and studied them closely. This parcel didn't get pulled out, and there was a reason for it, I think. Lisa explained it incredibly well. Having said that, I think we need more time, and quite honestly, I think the applicant can do better. And I think my fellow commissioners have raised a lot of concerns. Pulte is an incredibly well-respected developer. I think they can tweak this with the council lady's input, with the neighborhood's input, and address a lot of the concerns that my fellow commissioners have raised. And I think our obligation as a body is to try to do the best we can, given the underlying policy. So with that, I would propose a deferral. I don't know, Director, if a one-meeting deferral is long enough, do we need a two-meeting deferral?
I was actually just about to ask staff to go visit with the applicant because we do have timing constraints associated with subdivisions, and so if we don't act within a certain amount of time, it can be deemed approved. And so I think it is important to make sure that we talk with them and, Sean, if you can go visit with the applicant for a second, if I could, can I recite, while that's happening, can I recite some of the issues that I heard to make sure that I captured all of the commission's responses? Is that appropriate, Chair?
And let me add real quickly.
Yes.
One comment from me is, this whole diversity of lot issue is really important, and I don't think they've accomplished that here, and I think they need to accomplish that.
Okay.
And Lucy, can I add one more before?
Please, yes.
We have talked about the, sorry.
Yeah, no, we're having a free-for-all here. Let's, yes, Vice Chair, go ahead.
Okay, so I would like to better understand the open space issue that was brought up. And I think that the neighbors made a really good point, that they basically have built out the entire developable area on this lot. And so how do we take that into consideration with the cluster lot? I'd like to understand that. And then I would like to see if there is a way to increase the open space, which I think can be accomplished with some diversity of lot size. And then I really think that the grading plan is important here, because it seems like even if you're slightly off the steep slope, it's going to have a big impact on that entire parcel, and I think we really need to understand this from a holistic perspective. The road seems like the easiest thing to deal with, because that clearly is on the 25% deep slope, that definitely needs to be addressed, but I would ask for a more holistic look at the entire parcel and the grading plan, and then understanding this cliff. Man-made or not, it's a cliff and stuff is built around it, and I think we need to understand that.
Okay, so Commissioner Haynes, did you get everything before of your concerns before?
I did.
Okay, okay. Director, why don't you read off some of the?
Getting close over here. All right, so I have some general questions about the cluster lot provisions, including how they treat open space, protection of natural features, whether we've considered infrastructure such as or an easement previously, or what our standards might say about that. I have a general interest and concern around protecting steep slopes, including the location of the road and the way that the homes and the development is properly integrated just into sort of the environment more generally. And so that could lead us into a discussion about the lot sizes, but it could also lead us into a discussion about the way that the homes are situated generally, as well as the roads. There were some questions about the stub roads and how we are imagining sort of multi kind of connectivity to the area, including questions around sort of what those policy areas are, that where we might make those connections and natural features to ensure that we're protecting the integrity of the area holistically, but also thinking about our access needs. There were questions about the tree standards, and I think Lisa, staff addressed those, but I will go back and listen to the transcript, and if there's more questions about the tree standards, I'll just have that on as a list, just let us know. And then I think that that's the list of things that we would need to talk with the applicant about. Did I, may I ask if I missed anything, Chair? Oh, the open space, right, okay. Open space as a function of, yes, I have, open space here as a function of the lot pattern, but also as how we would treat, what the provisions in the cluster lot provide, right? And then on that point, just, I'm seeing one other, the question, we'll look at this question of the man-made sloped areas and whether, how those are treated as well.
So that's good. As I stated, just a brief, I agree with all of those. And as I stated briefly is, per our council, and I can ask this as well, but we want to make sure that we do not create something that is not in the subdivision regulations. And I'll tell you why. Those subdivision regulations have been a vetted document, vetted rules that have been voted on by this body, and it sets the playing rules, the rules of the game for both developers and neighborhoods. And so as we look at this, you know, work with council, make sure that we are not creating another regulation. We have some very good concerns, and the way that we can amend our subdivision regulations, as you all know, is to submit that to the staff and have a workshop and vet those with both the neighborhood communities and the development community and get input, lots of public input, hold public hearings. And that's how we get to the passage of the subdivision regulations. We did that, as Commissioner Haynes said, with White's Creek a long time ago, six years ago. And it was ad nauseam, mid, I think we even went past midnight one time, maybe. And so I just say all that to say that this is, these weren't done in a vacuum. This was done in a very public and open process, and it sets the rules of the game. And I know you all know that. I just say that to remind everyone how we got to this place. And so I appreciate the staff working on it, and like I said earlier, I think, and this is, look, and I'll tell the public this, this, the staff and all of the commissioners are dedicated public servants, and we try to get it right. We listen to everybody, and I will tell you that I've heard a lot of comments over the years of being on the commission that we do listen, we take these things very seriously, and we also vet them out. And I truly believe the commission, we've come up with the public and neighborhood associations and developers a way to go through the process. This is just part of that process. So I appreciate all of the comments from everyone and all the commissioners, and so we'll work on this. So the second question is, what is the appropriate timeframe for a deferral?
It's my understanding that the applicant is prepared to state on the record their openness to a deferral and waiving the 60-day timeframe that would usually constrain our thinking of it.
Mr. Murphy, please come to the microphone.
I don't have my calendar, so I don't know when your, is it June 10?
Here, we'll look at the June meeting. When's the June meeting?
I'm not going to take off my mask, so I won't pollute the.
It wasn't properly sanitized.
Hi, Chairman, two meetings would be to the June 10th meeting.
We're willing to defer to June 10th and waive the 60 days.
Mr. Haynes?
So I will make a motion to defer this matter to meetings to the June 10th meeting.
And I'm assuming that we would keep the public hearing open because there'll be substantial changes in the plan.
And keep the public hearing open, and I hope there are substantial changes to the plan.
Okay, yes, so that's a proper motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Chairman seconds it, and Chairman Lawson seconds it, that's a proper motion and second any other discussion. Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, ayes have it. And so we are on the last part of our agenda, which is historic. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Chairman. No report for today.
Okay. Commissioner Haynes, Parks?
We have had two meetings to consider.
We have had two meetings to consider renaming Hadley Park. We are going to have a third meeting on June 1st to, because Council Lady Hurt has proposed a different name, Hadley Lillard Park. So anybody who wants to come to our third meeting, come join us. This is an important issue, and we are debating this and debating this.
Thank you for the invite. We appreciate that. Executive Committee, I just, I really want to say thank you to the commissioners for your patience and your input with the staff team. And I want to say thank you to the staff. They have gone to great, great, great lengths to hold an in-person meeting, lots and lots of hours. The team has done really good. George and Bob and Lisa. Yeah, they did good. Give them a round of applause. And then we are in a transition. So as we move down the road, the Vice Chair and I and the Director, and if you all have concerns, just please let us know. Your safety and the public safety is our utmost concern. That's all I got on the Executive Committee. Director, you have anything?
Well, I just did want to give a shout out to Lisa and the team who spent a crazy amount of time trying to figure out how to get this meeting put together and keep everyone safe. This board is special because we get a lot, we have, generally have more folks than a lot of other boards. And so we had to, we, Lisa did a great job. And ITS has been a phenomenal partner with us to help us meet our mission and.
And I think one of our staff members said that our ITS, Scharde Johnson, was quote, amazing. So we appreciate Scharde for working with us on this.
Scharde is amazing.
Scharde.
The one other thing I would have before wishing everybody a good evening is that next meeting, we have boards, elections to boards and commissions. And so we'll be having that discussion. And other than that, I would love to put a work session on the calendar soon. I've got a couple of items. I'll speak with the Chair and Vice Chair about that and be in touch. I'm happy to see all of you.
Excellent. It is good to see everyone in person.
Yes.
Councilwoman, any legislative update?
Other than letting the council know that they can suggest other names to Jeff personally, I think we're, I think we're good and covered.
Not do that.
Is there, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm resigning from Parks if you do that.
We need a motion to adjourn. We're adjourned.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information about this and other programs, visit nashville.g.